I call this meeting to order. Let's stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Alright, the first item after that on the agenda is school board organization. And so, in order to do that, we need to have a chair. So every single year, we have a new chair, or the same chair newly brought into the picture. And so, I would ask if someone has a motion or a nomination for chair.
I'd like to nominate John McCarthy.
Alright, he is nominating John McCarthy. We have a second?
I have a second.
Daisy seconds. Any discussion on this?
So how do you feel about this?
Yes.
John has a counter nomination?
Well, you know, it is really an honor to be the school board chair in a lot of ways, you know. Can't believe I got to sign the contract for our new principal last week. Like wow, you know? On the other hand, there's a lot of younger people on the board now. And I think it would be kind of nice to have somebody who's not in the over seventy category. So that was what I was thinking.
That's how I respect elders.
We can still do that. We can still do that.
There is a benefit in having continuity from year to year as well. Alright, so we have a motion for John to be the board chair. We have a second on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any abstentions at all? Okay, that vote passes seven zero zero. John, this is now your meeting. While that's done.
Okay, well, thank you.
And thank you. And then the next thing would be to get a vice chair.
Thank you. So now we need a nomination for a vice chair. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Who was the vice chair last time?
It was Charles. Charles Iker.
Okay.
And a very active role he played, very.
Obviously.
Is that something you want to do again, Charlie?
If people want me to do it, I'll do it. If they don't, I won't.
I make a motion that we nominate Charlie as our vice chair.
I have a second. You know your stuff. That's a handy thing.
Okay, is there any discussion? And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I like what John, you know, you don't know him vice chair because there's not a whole lot. It's like the vice president, you know, you have some things to do, but most of it is the school board chair. Most of the signatures, most of the extra work, most of the meeting with the superintendent is done by the chair. Vice chair really doesn't have a lot of responsibility, but I'm honored. And I think about the only thing that I'm doing is that I do really is share in the creation of the agenda. And I too know that this is probably going to be my last term, so somebody's going to have to learn how to do this stuff eventually.
We'll pay close attention.
I'm sorry?
We'll play, we'll pay close attention.
Good.
I would also say that Charlie has played a very important role as far as I'm concerned. His advice has been instrumental in making a few less mistakes. Thank you, Charlie. Okay, so changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda that anyone wants to offer? Okay, and then let's move on then to the live district calendar.
Alright, so bear with me just a moment. Need some new glasses, so having a hard time seeing that far away. So I'll be pulling up my computer as well. Let's see. We got a number of events coming up over the next couple of weeks. As you can see, there is a lot of orange again, especially in this coming week. We sold the twenty, class twenty twenty-five fundraiser. That'll be going through the end of the week. We have a dreaming again presentation. We got to get more info up on that. We have a district-wide band concert. It looks like that still hasn't been updated, so I'll have to talk to the folks over there to get those calendar entries updated. Early college planning on April sixth. That's a parent guardian meeting for learners in grades six through ten. That's going to be again Thursday, April sixth, at six P M. in the library classroom, which is where we are right now. We have another one of those early release days next Wednesday. That's just for the elementary schools. P T S A meeting for the middle high school on the tenth. We have a campus award for juniors and seniors next Tuesday. We have a K and one music concert at RMS on the twelfth. Then the class of twenty twenty-five dance for middle school learners coming up as well. Happy to answer questions based on my limited knowledge of events, but that's kind of what we got going on for the next couple of weeks.
Nick, does that save the date on the fifth? Is that for the career day?
Yes. We do have a, at least a small flyer. I'll make a note to talk to the folks that run the calendar for the middle high school.
If you go back to the thing, it had an additional link. If you click the class.
That's on the bottom, gets more info. Again, that's the next couple of weeks, and then we'll have another board meeting on the seventeenth. The following week, we'll have a April break, so.
Okay, are there any any other questions or comments about the calendar?
I'd like to say, from the calendar, last week, I went to the concert. I don't know if anybody else did because it was packed at the Park Theater. The C H S J R M S music concert was phenomenal.
From the theater? That's so cool.
It was wonderful.
That was so exciting, kids.
It was so packed. It was wonderful.
That's really great.
Oh, I parked behind the town office.
Nice.
I got there a little late, but someone had so nicely moved out of the parking space in front of the door, so I was able to go in.
You looked like a VIP. You parked.
I looked, it looked like I had really planned ahead.
Hard work. Carrie Swift really pulled off something amazing on that Little Lady stage. Really cool.
Sorry, I didn't see the chorus, but I heard they were amazing.
It was breathtaking. Honest to God, the pieces that she was putting out there were just breathtaking. It was extraordinary. The chorus especially. Band did great. Chorus was breathtaking. So cool. It was really, really good.
Thanks for representing us. Okay, well, it's great to be able to see these things in advance and or just to remind it all of us that this calendar is there and we can use it to see what's going on in our district. There's a lot. Okay. If there's anything more about that, why don't we move on to the public comments first, I guess. Public comments, one.
John, when it's appropriate, too, I forgot to mention, should change when you ask for changes that I need to remove the minutes from last week.
Okay, right. Before we do the consent agenda, okay.
Alright. It's like we're having a problem with the policy site again. Alright, so public comments, number one, we have two sessions every school board meeting, beginning in the end. We only have a digital audience today, so I'll just explain those rules for now. If you are remote and you'd like to make a public comment, you may do so by using the hand raise feature at the bottom of whatever screen you're on. Press that, I get a little hand, I can acknowledge you. If you could just give me your first name, last name, and town of residence before making any public comment. Like I said, unfortunately, the policy's not pulling up, but the basics of it is, you know, just be kind, no personal tax. Try to keep it to a, you know, somewhat short period of time. And we'll go for them there. So I'll give people an opportunity to raise their hands, and then if we have anybody, we can acknowledge them. Alright, I do have one hand.
Okay, good.
Alright, Anita, you should have the ability to speak at this point. I don't know if you're speaking or not, Anita, but you need to unmute yourself. Okay, it looks like she just put her hand down, so we can give another chance later at the end of the meeting if there is a comment to be made.
Okay, Nick, and if if in the next five minutes or something she's does raise her hand again, please let us know, we'll
Okay.
We'll circle that.
No, it's the only hand that was up, so.
Yeah, okay. Alright, very good. We want to thank Amrielle for being here again. Two weeks in a row, and it's nice, and it's the end of basketball season, although it was great also to have you out there playing.
So, last Wednesday, we had pain for college one oh one, and it helps students and parents figure out the financial burden. It's always a problem with the gen options that help do that stuff. We have career day on Wednesday, which we talked about. The sophomore class is doing that dance for middle school learners on next Friday to raise funds for their classes. The senior class did a bake sale on Saturday to also help raise funds for senior trips and stuff like that. Girls tennis has their first game tonight against Bishop Brady. And baseballs and softballs' first games are coming up on the fourth, on the tenth and the twelfth.
Okay, great. How was the national aid night? Was it well attended?
I'm not sure because it was mainly for seniors, and I'm a junior, so.
Okay.
I was there. I went, and I was a junior. And it was in here, there was probably ten to fifteen, probably. Very informative. It was really informative to go and listen to, and the people were great. The company that came in, I don't know who they were again, but they're really good. She was just, she was full of information and they, they even, the two people that she had with her asked you questions just to like inform us of things, and it was pretty good. It was.
Excellent.
Yeah, parents had good questions, and some students were even there. And then they told us of a couple other things that we could attend. I missed the Plymouth one, but there was a really big one at Plymouth State, so.
I'm sure the parents have other ways to get information throughout the year, but I've been amazed over the years that there are people who really don't understand financial aid. Of course, the numbers are so big, but a lot of times there's a lot more help out there than parents realize and.
Yeah, and it wasn't even just financial aid. She went over everything, like visiting colleges, the essays that they have to write, S A T scores. Do they need them? Do they not? Like, she went over every, it was so awesome having my first kid come through. It was really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot, isn't it?
It is a lot. It really is.
Okay, are there any other questions for Amrielle? Thank you for your report, Amrielle. Appreciate it. Okay. And now we're on to superintendent's report.
Alright, we'll start off with some congratulations. If we go right over here. This unbelievable picture taken of this group of people. We had this past Friday, it was a fundraiser for the seniors. There was a staff or a student volleyball game, and that group on the left over there, you know, they look a little, you know, out of sync, maybe not having the greatest of uniforms. But wow, could they play volleyball. And so they defeated the high school learners last Friday by two sets to one. And it was, it was, it was fun. I just, good group of people over there, so. No, wonderful, wonderful time, wonderful event. Got to play in the basketball one a month ago or so. That didn't go so well for us. It wasn't, it wasn't quite as close as this one was, but it was nice to have up there. It's a nice picture that someone, Chuck, I believe it was. Tenders, the that took the picture. Destination Imagination. The Improvables from C H S. We had indicated last time that we had a few teams going to the state competition. They did come into first place during that timeframe, so congratulations to that. Congratulations not written here. Congratulations to six individuals from the high school who, I believe are seniors, who were all academic all-state, I believe it is. I'll have to let Heather describe it a little bit more, but we have six individuals basically had a three-point-oh G P A or higher for all four years, as well as they had played at least two sports every single year from freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior. And so Heather had gone to Concord with them today to be recognized for that. Heather, did you have any specific bits of information, like the name of that?
It is sponsored by the N H I A and the N H A D A. And yes, our student athletes had to have a three oh or better since their freshman year, and so it's kind of funny that Kim was bringing those things up because students don't always start thinking about that as early as they can as freshmen, right? So we had six students. And we should encourage them now that, you know, it's back, because it hasn't been around for three years because of COVID. So they were having it, but it wasn't as well known about. But there is big scholarships in that, too. Those kind of things that are opportunities that certainly will continue to encourage our students to take advantage of. But it was a great, great opportunity for us, yeah.
Actually, we didn't even know that was a thing until right now.
Correct, right.
I don't.
So I, and I don't know, Kim and that has become something that in the past, we have not been tracking some of the things that maybe we've had in the past. But of the six seniors, they said, this one said, I believe that we're the first to ever get this award for Conan because we don't remember anybody else getting it. So, so again, and, and so you know, I think all systems were in there, but it was Riley Herr, Jacob Sawyer, Emma Tenters.
Yeah, they're a picture.
Are they all in there?
A lot of them.
Probably Adrian.
That's funny.
No, Kelly Williams and Laney, Laney Halomo were our six.
Congratulations. Wonderful.
But those, those were the six that we represented, yes.
And then a congratulations to the J G S School for performing last week. Well, really learning all week long with N H D I, New Hampshire Dance Institute, and then performing in their gymnasium last Friday. Was able to get to see some of that, and I believe that that has been recorded and will be up on our YouTube site later on this week. People will be able to watch the entire thing, or they'll be able to go and they can choose kind of the groups that they want to, the grade levels that they want to watch. Also, there was a group of teachers that got up there and did their dance as well, and so that was well received. Do you have a?
I have something to add to D I.
Sure.
Our senior L O lineman won one of the personal achievement awards, and it comes with a scholarship as well.
Excellent.
And funny, you should mention her because I wanted to, the timing, I'll interrupt this. I am just beyond, yeah, I don't, I don't know this young woman, but holy cow, she won the statewide New Hampshire Poetry Out Loud competition on March, late March for the state. She's going on to nationals. It's huge.
I think that's this week, right, Wednesday, Thursday, I think, December?
May, May eighth and tenth, they'll be in Washington, D C for the Poetry Out Loud competition. I mean, that's extraordinary. That's congratulations.
I, at the D I states, I got to watch the group of seniors bring in our two elementary schools into their whole circle. I don't know what you'd call it, but when they're telling the scores or the placements for the categories you're in, you cross your fingers, cross your arms, and then hold the hand to the person next to you, and you make a big circle, and they brought both of the elementary schools into it and made one giant circle because they're about to move on, and we don't have anybody to teach the younger kids different traditions that our schools have had, and they showed them that one, and the younger kids were like totally in awe that the big kids were sitting with them and were including them, so it was really nice to see.
Great, thank you. That's so much more powerful than me just saying, yeah, we won first place. Great, so, so thank you for adding that. We were in the process of interviewing for the facilities director. That's going on, that went on last week. We had a few interviews. We have some this week as well. So we'll continue moving forward in that direction. And we have the Teacher Leadership Academy. I'll be sending in the names for those who are going to be participating in that this coming year. We have about fifteen cohort members, so fifteen individuals roughly evenly spread throughout the buildings. So more elementary than secondary this time, whereas I think the first time we did it was kind of the reverse, which is nice to see. And there'll be fifteen new individuals who are going to be a cohort together for that learning experience. There are a few individuals who, because of COVID and other situations that occurred during the implementation of that back in the nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, twenty twenty-one school year had not taken or not finished a couple courses, so they're going to be having an opportunity to do some one-offs here and there so that they can officially complete it, and I think that's exciting. So they're going to have the opportunity for that. So another exciting thing happened the day of the elections. Congratulations here to everyone for just a really, I think, strong fall and winter around budgeting and around communicating in the community and around just, you know, I don't know, going out there and working really hard to be a board member. So all that positive energy, I think, paid off, and I'm really excited about the community's voice during that timeframe. I think that even in some of the areas where there were perhaps the votes didn't go quite the way you'd want it, it was, it was closer. And so I think those are positive things to think about. That same evening, we haven't been a lot going on during that day. Obviously, the remote learning happening for a couple of schools. We had in-person learning for J G S, and we have a finalist for the Chaparral Grace School Principal Council and spend a lot of time with the faculty, touring around with some of the individuals from the S A U, also with some parents. We had actually a pretty good parent group show up in the evening, and then the board voted that night. And congratulations to Deanna Zilski, who is going to be, that's the next picture. I just took this off of Nick's work that he put on Facebook, because I thought it was a good picture, but there's a quote from her that you can read there on your own. And the press release was put on Facebook and then also sent out today, so Nick did that, but it was just really exciting work from the committee that went through and did all the interviews, and I think we're, I know we're very excited.
Yeah, Ruben, if I could just say, certainly over the past a few months during that kind of campaign period, I had the chance to talk to a lot of people in Ridge. And definitely, you know, echo, there was a lot of positivity out there. I think there's a lot of people in in Ridge that support the schools and like what we're doing, and even the ones that, you know, may have questions about it or are challenging some of the things we do from my conversations that, you know, is able to see that, you know, ultimately, they really do care about the kids and want the best for the kids. So I think that's important for us to understand as we move forward, right? We may not agree on everything, but, you know, it was, it was a real realization to me to see that, you know, that there are parents out there that you know, may not be completely aligned with everything that goes on, but certainly they, they care about the kids and care about what we're doing, and I think there's a lot of opportunity there, you know, as we move forward to build on that.
Well, I will say I appreciate your very proactive process that you use and the conversation, the way you have conversations with people, because we don't have to agree on everything. But the more, what we can do, the more we communicate and listen and exchange ideas, the closer we become as a community and the more we grow. Not necessarily all in sync.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And that's fine. And it's good to have differences, so, thank you. Talking about community. Community School Planning Grant. Last time I said that we had a couple takes. We wrote a grant and we submitted it, and we were awarded a hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred for Community Schools Planning Grant. Didn't get the full two hundred fifty thousand, but that's okay. There may be more money that will come as a result, or a couple other grants are tied to this that I might be going for just for reading and so forth, and after-school programming. And there's about, there's about two or three others that will probably use some of the work that we did here to help write some of these other ones. But this is exciting because of possibility. It's a planning grant, so we're not actually going to implement anything with this. This is more about the conversations. The conversations with established nonprofits within the community, people who are working with kids already, like the Head Start, maybe the Kids Club in this area, other. The Head Start, maybe the Kids Club, uh, in this area, other preschools, bringing private preschool. And then groups of individuals who don't. Uh, really affiliate themselves with the school at, at all and. Trying to become that community, that school community that. Says we are here for all kids, not just for the ones who come through our doors, but all the kids in Ridge and Chaffrey. And already, already Heather really, her role represents the most inclusive. Uh, group or the, uh, programming that we do here in the district is really. A lot of people, whether they come here or not, involve themselves in the extracurricular activities, the co-curricular activities, so we have a lot of that. Doing that, having that mindset for birth. First, you know, year one, year two, year three, and again, we might have difference, differences, but there, there is a lot of. Developmental science out there to help really raise healthier individuals, regardless of the direction that they go into their schooling. It's about nutrition, it's about wellness, it's about reading to your children, it's about, you know, speech and. There, there's so much, um, engaging the world around them, if, and there's also elements of spirituality that are important for certain groups. Here, um, that would, I think, would really be, uh, wonderful to explore with this type of planning grant. Do that work, get forty people roughly together, um. Parents, teachers, individuals, like I said, about twenty-four community partners that we want to actually get formal MOUs with next year. And then. Say here, we're going to develop what we believe will be a phenomenal way of doing business in our Ringe and Chaffrey area. For improving the lives of all of our kids ages zero to eight. And then putting that in a larger, submitting that to UNH, basically, it's in charge of submitting the state grant to the federal government. For the following year. This could include before school programming, after school program, it could be, uh, there, there's a lot of things that can be done here. And it doesn't have to be just all public, it can be private, we, it's, it's about working together as a community to move forward. So excited about the possibilities of that. And certainly there's going to be a lot of learning that will take place during our research and our conversations, and that's only going to benefit us. Regardless of what takes place afterwards. Talking about community, thinking about the future. Uh, I saw, I saw the elements coming, the items coming in on the agenda tonight and went, oof. They all go together, and so, um. I'm going to encourage you, this is a little bit different than a superintendent, this is more of an encouragement. As you intake some of the presentations and the conversations that we have tonight. Um, I just, this was just something that popped into my head. As I was listening to some of the information that was being provided. And we have a lot going on. We have a hundred acre property, it's about, it's ninety-nine point nine five acres or something like that, ninety-eight. And this is a place that was purchased years ago for a new school. That didn't happen, we still have the land. We purchased that land probably three hundred fifty thousand or so around there, I have the actual numbers, but it's not, it's around that area. Uh, five years ago, six years ago. We had a study, we couldn't have sold it for more than maybe a couple hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, so it was right at the time to do. Right now, we could probably get our money back, you might even be able to get a little bit more than that. Or we could think about what we're going to hear tonight and consider maybe a different possibility. So we're going to hear tonight about the career and technical education opportunities. Now, if we stay fairly similar to what we're doing right now, maybe the best thing to do is just to renovate what we have. If we look to expand offerings for the kids in this region. And think about what we really could do. Uh, whether it be, we've talked about culinary arts, we've talked about cosmetology, some, I think horticulture came out. You know, different sciences and so forth, which by the way, that land is perfect for environmental science work. What if, what if? We develop the Jeffrey Ridge Cooperative School Desert Center for Experiential Learning on that site. Not an elementary school, not a high school, it would be largely, you know, starting off for high school learners. But as you start to build, you could also put other things on there down the road, like a. We talked about a wellness center, well, maybe it's a performance center, maybe it's not a wellness center, maybe it talks about wellness, the arts. Maybe we put in some other classrooms, and these classrooms are general classrooms, they're not high school specific, middle school specific. Elementary specific or anything like that, or even school specific. Why not build a center that the community could use, perhaps there's a funding stream that we can, you know, use for some of the, the renting of, of this. Or if you're in a, you know, if there's not a club around, you want to be part of a club. You sign up, you get to use the weight room or, or things like that, basketball courts. Uh, what about our homeschoolers who, hey, they, they homeschool for a specific reason, they're in homeschool groups. Why not be able to give them a classroom that has wifi access and has the capacity for the natural world around. To them to explore the natural world around them, as well as be a part of the athletics after school and also those older kids going to. The other centers that are there, as well as the kids who are attending the general school around in this area here, Conval and Mecanic. Uh, I just think if we consider that property and think again about the community as a whole. All of our people, the people who disagree with us. And some of our ideologies, they have different ideologies, we all have the same purpose of wanting to have a healthy community. People who, kids who grow up and are healthy and can think and can, um. Add value to the world around them. And so what if we looked at that property through that lens? What we've talked about a five acre parcel of it where we were talking about, um, energy savings, putting. Uh, solar panels up there, again, not necessarily the most efficient. Approach to getting electricity, but technology is getting better and better all the time, and so. You do that, can that pay for? The electricity in that area for our schools right here, for the municipality, so let it, let it go beyond. Our, our school and really benefit the taxpayers of the community, can that property, can we envision that property for something like that? Where people go and experience learning, experience the natural world. Maybe down the road, we have, because we built something there. You build a couple other sports fields and, you know, that, that could be used by the school certainly. Um, and the community, I think there's a lot of thinking, there's a lot of possibilities, and I wonder. And again, haven't spent a lot of time thinking about this, but I wonder if tonight's conversation. Might lead us into exploring that a little bit more. That's my report for tonight, be happy to. Answer any questions or.
Well, thank you, Ruben, and what about questions, are there questions that, um, people would like to ask? Or comments? And I, I guess I'd like to start off by just saying that, uh, you know, I saw you out there on, in that picture, having played volleyball and. Um, I've had half a dozen.
Seven points in a row serving, by the way, I, I don't want to like brag, I just know.
There wasn't an intimidation factor, they didn't know you were the superintendent.
Didn't know, didn't know.
Well, well, I would like to say that, uh, half a dozen people at least have commented very favorably on your role as the, uh. CHS mascot. They said that you did a great job and they were very impressed to see you out there doing that as well.
Um, when we talk about the election, um, congratulations to Chris, also to John and Charlie. Um, but I do, when we think about. The factors that helped us help the budget to pass, I also want to give kudos to John for that newsletter. Because. People really, um, read that newsletter, respected it, kept it. I mean, I saw it in many people's homes all the way up to voting day, not that I'm in that many people's houses, but you know what, um. So, putting out that educational information was really helpful.
Yeah, and, and also the letter to the other.
Yes, absolutely, yep.
And also, what did you say, Kyle?
Letter to the.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll agree with that, like, looking at the people come into the polls, um, oh. Many, many people had that pamphlet, you know, in their hands as they were heading in, I'll say that, so.
So cool.
Just a bit of kind of a, a data point there for you that, you know, people received it, they looked at it and they brought it to the polls when they voted.
Well, you know, I thought that pamphlet was great, but it was a product of, uh, more than a dozen people. And, uh, you know, Ruben, under his authority, brought them together, sent out invitations, people in the community, ex. You know, former school board members and, uh. And, and others in the community, former bus company owner and. It, it was, uh, members of the union, of the, uh, support staff union. And we had several meetings and the idea of doing that pamphlet is what came out of that and, uh. And in addition, I'd like to say that the material in there was primarily developed by. Uh, Ruben and Nick, Nick had a huge role in it and, and with information provided by others, I wrote a. A, a, a letter which was on the front, but it was really a, a team effort and.
Yeah, there are about, there are over half a dozen individuals who. Formally contributed to the, um, language and they're probably closer to ten. Remember that. But you're right, there were, I think we had eighteen individuals here, um, a couple times. Brainstorming and people were honest, that's, again, people in this, in the room that. Uh, don't always necessarily see, uh, things the same way. Um, some who have certainly had some, uh, critique of. Me as well and, and some of the things I've done, wanted some fantastic feedback to me about messaging and so forth, I take it, I, I still remember it. So I thank that, that specific individual. Um, and I think that, so it was, the more. Uncomfortable we can, you know, when we come together and if there's discomfort, I mean, you try to work through that and understand and, and get to that common goal. That's where the power comes out.
And I guess just before we move off of this, I'd just like to say that. While Jeffrey Ring Center for Experiential Learning, that's a crazy idea.
Did you write that exactly?
That, that's a, the, there's a lot in there, that's, that, that's really food for, uh, consideration.
It might be a better name. The definition of what it would be.
Like, traveling around with this little range. Basketball league this winter, I saw. How community centers can really pull together a community, shockingly, you know, to walk into. The community center in Clermont. When it's snowing out and seeing that facility used and there's classroom space and. Uh, what looked like a daycare space and there are people everywhere and I just really wanted that for us. A place to unite us, where people can come together, intergenerational use. So, yeah, I'm very interested.
You can see it too in the bubble, which would be. I mean, a similar idea, not the bubble, but I get what you're saying, like, go there and you're like. Wow, there's a lot of people here that aren't just, like, the FPU athletes, you know, there's a lot of people who go there and use it. Yep, and I was there because my kids wanted to be inside playing sports, so.
Yep, I was thinking about, um, what, what it brought to mind to me was the quest camp. And the power of having our, uh. Elders in the community. Yeah, you're working and saying, I have these skills, let's do this, I have these skills, let's do, I want to share these with this with kids, like, I, this. It was very, very powerful, the intergenerational aspect of sharing those talents and skills and to have something like that, again. Would be, you know, so, and a, a place, an opportunity, a maker space, something where, yeah, you could have short-term woodworking classes. You could have, but use our community members, I mean, that's, that kind of space could give us that.
Cooking classes so that families can learn to budget and prepare meals from scratch.
Okay, well, thank you.
And a garden.
And a garden. That's always presumed. Should be one everywhere.
Absolutely, absolutely. A wellness center, okay. All right, well then, it's time to move on to the consent agenda. And, uh, Kim, I think you already mentioned that you'd like to.
Yes, please, I think to make a motion to remove the minutes.
Okay. Think we can do that. And, uh, we, we, we don't need a, a vote to, to, no, okay, so, uh. If there are no other changes to the consent agenda. Then, um, I didn't stand a motion to.
And make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you, Daisy.
Oh, a second, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Christine. And then discussion, is there any discussion? Well, if, if there's not, I would like to ask for some, uh. Information on the, uh. Budget transfer to reverse the, uh, expenditure from the unassigned fund balance.
Sure, yeah, I think I have enough information for that. So. The, in talking with Carrie and, um, being at the finance committee and having this conversation. Uh, basically, the district right now, cash flow wise and, uh, you know, partly for not great reasons, not being able to hire certain. Uh, personnel in different positions, we do have a surplus right now that can handle that right there, that amount. And it is cleaner, easier, um. It's better overall, especially for, it's a lot less work for the, the, uh, business office. To be able to just take the money from the existing budget as opposed to, um. From the unassigned fund balance, so that way you fully populate your unassigned fund balance again. And, uh, we just do that same work that you, which is the purpose of the money in the first place, was to get certain equipment at a time and so forth. It can be done through a different means. Uh, we, the question was brought up, and we, Charlie asked about, well, you know, the reason we did this was because of cash flow, because we all know. The end of last year was like, that was, that was rough. Um, but Carrie feels very certain that we'll be in a, a good position at that point. So that's, should, that's not, uh, that's not currently an issue.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, appreciate it. And, uh. Are there any other questions? And being none, so, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, as I mentioned. Please signify by saying aye. And opposed. Okay, so that carries seven zero. Oh, six, well, yeah. Next one will be six, and then we'll, and then we'll take up the, uh. The minutes for.
We'll make a motion to accept the minutes from.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'll second the motion.
And thank you, Daisy. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstain, okay, so it's six zero one.
Uh, shouldn't Chris also abstain, because he wasn't on the board yet at that point?
What's that?
Uh, shouldn't Chris also abstain since?
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you, Nick. You're the man, five, five. Five zero two, good to.
Why would Chris abstain?
Cause he wasn't a board member yet.
If Kim's, if Kim's abstaining because she's not, she wasn't at the meeting and Chris was not a board member yet at that board meeting.
All right, very good. And so now we're on to a discussion of the CTE renovation process. Okay.
All right, thank you. So this is, I'm sure leads into the Jeffrey Ridge Cooperative School District Center for Experiential Learning conversation. Uh, but this is something that we presented to the education committee to get some feedback. About how best to kind of move forward related to a possible renovation or expansion of our CTE programming. Um, CTE center, things like that. So we'll share the same kind of information with the board. And what we're kind of looking for tonight is an approval of concept, so we can then move forward and continue to do some of the planning work. Um, if the board feels like this is something we want to pursue. So the opportunity is um, kind of once every twenty five year. Swing at the, at the bat, so to speak, speak. Every twenty five years, CTE centers are on a cycle that they can seek state aid to renovate, expand, or rebuild um, CTE areas. So during this window of time, the state funds seventy five percent of the cost and the local um, town or school district is. Is responsible for the remaining twenty five percent. There's no rule on what the twenty five percent has to be raised through. Obviously taxation and a bond is what most districts do, but. Um, I know Conval, which is sort of tied with us in this process, as they're doing theirs, they're also looking at fundraising and things like that. And this opportunity covers both existing CTE programs as well as additions that we may want to add to our offerings. There is a rough timeline for when things have to get done. This current school year was about data collection through the, the region fourteen, which includes Conan, Conval, and Messinic. So there was a lot of surveying that was done through the kind of home base for region fourteen, which is Conval. Um, collecting information through community surveys, which will share some data in this presentation, um, pulling from the state. Uh, labor board, uh, you know, hiring statistics, projected openings, things like that. This year is also some of the initial visioning that has to get done, um, which is kind of where the superintendent's conversation, you know, kind of centers around as well. What do we want our center to look like or a portion of the center? And what sorts of things would we then support to get that center built? We would want architectural planning by this fall because the state applications are at least the first draft around those are due in by January of twenty twenty four. And then the most aggressive time cycle would have something going on next year's warrant to move forward and be ready for the two thousand twenty five kind of breaking ground process. This is the timeline that Conval is using for their particular um, process. You can see that they're kind of in the pre-bond phase right now, which is also where we would be. Um, they're looking at getting their design documents kind of squared away in the fall of this year, moving into next year, and then. Starting to have that bond vote discussion for next year or possibly the year after. Um, with construction beginning in the, the two thousand twenty five school year. So ours would likely be very similar to this, that would not necessarily lockstep, but there are some specific state deadlines for when applications and things like that have to be submitted. So based on some of the information with our current program, as well as the information that came through the um, data collection from Conval. Our thoughts would be to add some programs. Um, we're currently, there is no offering in region fourteen for culinary arts, cosmetology. Or the completed kind of forensics, public safety tracks, and there's a lot of data that supports growing those programs, which I'll talk about in the next couple of slides. And we also believe that our current space certainly would need a renovation, possibly to be replaced and expanded, maybe on a different location. Um, in the school district to better support growing these programs and getting more people involved. And just to give you a sense of our current, the growth of our current program as we move from building trades to construction trades, this year we had. I would say easily twelve to fifteen learners from Conval. We already have for next year thirty six kids signed up from Conval, so roughly. You know, nearly double this year with another sixteen on standby from Conval if we have the space. In addition to having many of our own learners in this program as well. So when we offer. Programs like this and we have the access to them, we have the right supplies, the right instruction, you know, we are able to draw learners in and set them up with some of these opportunities. And those numbers are fresh off the press from today. So we looked at, you know, again, there's three options we could really make with our existing technology ed building. We could renovate it, which is obviously the lowest cost. And you could then repurpose the existing footprint. Another option would be to replace that space, maybe expand it um, on the same kind of area, but design a building that better matches with the building we have now and allows for that second floor to be used. Which currently really, it's kind of sloped steeply down. There's very limited space in the second floor. We could also repurpose that space and maybe build a new space for the trades or go with a completely offsite kind of option. So then we looked at the specific reasons why we're suggesting these programs. Um, cosmetology. Both. Conan and Conval, as well as Messinic, um, have expressed high demand in this type of program. Right now, both Conval and Conan were sending learners primarily to Keene, who express interest in cosmetology, which is pretty restrictive. Um, not because they don't take our learners, but because the travel time between here and Keene. Means that individuals who want to take cosmetology have to give up half of their school day to do that. And Conval is facing a similar problem. They're sending some to Milford and some to Keene. And Messinic isn't currently offering any sort of access to it except in an after-school program. And the superintendent Messinic said that is their only after-school program that's completely full with a waitlist. She said that if we had that program here, they would certainly be sending kids this way. There's also a potential with this and some of our other proposed offerings to build some more business kind of integration with that. Um, and engaging the community and some of the costs for things that kids might want. And in a cosmetology program, there's usually a limited window throughout the course where they would allow community members to come in and pay for a minor service. Some of that can offset things for the kids to have to help them feel ready for their own kind of journey as well, which is another benefit. The forensics and law track is a second one. Um, the nice thing about pursuing this as a possible expansion, we already offer some courses. That could become part of a forensics or law track. Connected to some courses Conval offers, so we would not have to add any new courses to do this. We would simply have to designate them as. CTE courses and make sure that they meet certain competencies, things like our forensic science class or danger class, those could already be paired into a CTE track. And the nice thing about doing that is it allows learners from all the schools to come to our school for those classes and continue in Conval and complete that track. But it also allows us to renovate any science spaces that we would be using for these CTE classes, even when they're also used for our own classes during the day. So it's just another option to. Kind of take good advantage of this grant. And then culinary arts, there are currently very limited. Um, local eating establishments open during the lunch hour. Outside the dinner hour. Um, so that's a big possibility during the school day to have our own culinary program that's open potentially to the community. To come in and have lunch or things like that. Um, a lot of culinary programs do catering for the school or local community, which is a big boon. And there's a definite business integration with that. Typically, in a culinary program, there's front of house training as well as actual food prep training. So again, you have learners who can learn all different sides of what it's like to work in that industry and build some business skills as well.
Um, you would imagine if we had like a. Performance kind of wellness center and someone was.
If it was like an experiential type of learning, like, yes.
Catering and stuff for that.
Yeah, that'd be, I, yeah, it'd be amazing. So this is another program where some, some income could help offset costs for the kids.
Being, you know, out in the nature, their forensic science would then learn. More on what happens to DNA and different. Crime scene things in.
Or they could stumble upon decaying carcasses of animals and kind of learn.
Hopefully not crime scene.
Well, no, but they would learn. Yes, how the environment changes.
Yes, there actually is a whole, not that we would do this, but. In terms of that outdoor kind of crime scene learning, there's a whole place called the Body Farm down in the south where they literally just put. They put human bodies and like allow for the study, but you could do set crime scenes and look at how the elements kind of impact evidence could be really interesting. Yeah, not dead bodies. So it's called. Really, yeah, really gross. But. Um, there's a huge demand for this right now, and our kids are highly engaged with anything we offer for cooking. And we had this year, our, our just regular old cooking class. It wasn't culinary, it wasn't anything sophisticated beyond just an intro to cooking class. They participated in a statewide. They didn't realize it, but it was a culinary contest or culinary programs to turn meals ready to eat MREs. Into like actual meal items and spruce them up and our. Intro to cooking class learners were so invested and so engaged with learning this that they went, they. Did really well at the school level, went to the statewide competition, which was at like a full professional culinary kitchen at another high school. And all the other teams are dressed like head to toe chef outfits and everything, but our kids placed, I think, second overall. And they won the snack round against all these other high schools with culinary programs. Our kids are really into this is my point. They, they really want to do more with it. So I think this is something that would draw a lot of interest and support the community. And of course, we would advocate keeping our current program, which is construction trades as well. So just some labor market pieces on the current projections through two thousand twenty six. Cosmetology is, is projecting to have twenty two hundred openings. We're allowed to survey both Hillsborough and Cheshire County because region fourteen straddles both. It's um, Conval obviously is in Hillsborough and we're in Cheshire. So there's a thirteen and a half percent increase projected in Hillsborough County, twenty two hundred new openings. And three hundred more in Cheshire County, which is a ten percent increase. So that's robust in terms of the size of our county. Culinary arts, um, even larger, eighteen thousand openings projected in Hillsborough County through two thousand twenty six. And three thousand openings in Cheshire County, and then protective service under which our potential expansion of that forensic stuff would fall. Four thousand openings in Hillsborough County and six hundred and fifty in Cheshire. So all three of these are well supported by employment and labor data that would allow us to, to add them in. You can skip this slide because the superintendent kind of created a much more wide ranging possibility, but. Basically, again, it comes back to either renovating, replacing, or expanding our current spaces. Mrs. Schulman?
Okay, so in the fall, we sent out a um. The entire. Region fourteen CTE sent out. Survey to the community at large, asking, what do you think our kids need? What does our community need? So that we could really gather data to see what, what the um, interest is in different. Programs. Slide. And so. Technical career and technical education. Can be a pathway to college or not college and straight into the workforce. It's a wonderful opportunity. And from our survey, this is what our community is expressing. It's their opinion, whether they agree or disagree. So it looks like they have a strong feeling that it can be a pathway to college. So if you look at this. This graph here, you can see. Which programs garner the most interest. Mrs. Baker, please correct me if I'm, I'm misspeaking, but I believe that Conval will be offering the animal science program. And also the health science. Okay. Down a few are the cosmetology. Culinary arts. This also includes our traditional construction trades. Which we would definitely want to keep and just keep boosting, bolstering that program. But this is from our community, our neighbors, our friends. The school, this is what they're saying they want for their children. Couple of comments on the survey. They'd love to see more programs. Topics such as nursing, vet tech, that's going to be happening at Conval, and our learners will be able to apply for that. They'd like more classes, a more variety of classes. You can read the rest of the comments there. Go back one, please. In reference to what Mr. Desmond was saying, the comment at the bottom. Is about scheduling, and this was from one of our, one of our community members. My children never went because the travel time was not permitted. And the time offerings. Would not allow them to complete their required courses. With the block schedule and collaborating with three different high school schedules. And the travel, the distance between each school, we really do have to um, address that because the kids can't spend hours in a car. Thank you.
Last statement that isn't necessarily pertinent to. Um, the first part.
Yeah.
But is important, is pertinent to the conversation as a whole. Um. Not convenient to fringe students. It is further. That's, that's true.
Yeah.
And I would also like to see adult classes utilizing the technology center, that intergenerational community. Center like. Experience would be, would be fantastic.
I will say that this. This survey was done this fall, so it was before that we fully, it was like the beginnings of our block schedule and we have had. With learners going to either Messinic or Conval or coming here, we are much closer than we were with the seven period day. So that's less, much less of an issue now going to Conval or back than going to Keener back. So that piece at least is better. But anything that we don't offer here that requires that further travel is really not. Again, that's where you have kids saying, I can't give up half of my school day to go to Keene. That's just not feasible.
The survey asked our community members, would you be in favor? Of supporting? The region agency center for being renovated. Replaced. Advised. So that we could offer more programs to our learners. With a resounding yes, eighty eight percent of the respondents. Yes, we support. Offering more programs to our kids.
So the last piece is just looking at our next steps, um, and I'll try to speak to the outcomes that would happen on each of these steps. Knowing that they're again, just kind of projected at this point. But we're at step one right now, seeking that kind of initial approval. So the outcome from tonight would be that approval of concept. That would tell us, yes, we do want to move forward with continuing to do the behind the scenes work to add more programs. Um, to start engaging with planning and designing drawings and things like that. So that's where we are right now. The second piece that we would then do, assuming number one, we're, we're given the direction to move forward. Um, we would have to make a firm decision and start the application process for any additional programs. There's a lot of paperwork that goes into that. We have to pull up, the data we showed today is one piece of the puzzle. We have to pull more. Data from different sources to show that this would in fact move forward to support jobs. Um, we have to find industry recognized credentials that would then be offered for each of these and. Um, come up with a articulation agreement with some organization outside of here that would continue the learning for our kids should they choose to do that. So there's a lot of steps that go into number two, a lot of substeps, but we would want to do that before we did anything else with deciding on. Um, number three, which is the plans. So the third step would be to have an architect come in to draw up options and have the board select one or whatever, you know, options they wanted to move forward with. Which would then be an integral part of um, coming up with our application. We would want to do lots of community forums and continue surveying the community about what they want to see for this renovation and expansion. Um, and make sure that the community's voice is really present. That's a critical part of the application and ensuring that whatever twenty five percent looks like. The community is supportive of that when the time comes. Conval is currently doing a lot of, of solicitation to businesses for um, donations and fundraising. Some CTE centers have entire wings of their center that are named for. But you know, big ticket corporate sponsors who have basically said, we want to build this part of your CTE center because you'll, you'll funnel workers to us. So that's something they're looking at doing and it's something we could certainly do as well. Um, so that might be a nice next step is to try to get some donation process going to offset the cost. Once the preliminary application is set and the funding is kind of looked at and the plans are settled and the community input has been had. Then we would want the board to approve a preliminary application. That we could submit to the state and get any feedback from that. And then the last couple of steps would be. Putting together the funding stream, um, and deciding whether that would be a bond, some combination of bond and something else, and then of course, having the community vote. So the last thing before we answer any questions, I was hoping you could speak a little bit to what access to CTE. Expanded programs like this would do for our learners based on what you're seeing for their post-secondary kind of needs.
Well, definitely by bringing on, bringing more programs and making them available to our learners, there's the opportunity to earn college credit. To complete programs and then we can have articulation agreements with local colleges. So learners who complete two years of, say, a cosmetology program. Or culinary program can walk onto a college campus. Um, with potentially twelve to fifteen college credits. Um, Keene State has a partnership with CTE programs. Um, the community college systems also have partnerships. With CTE program, so there's a benefit that way, um, at no additional cost to our learners. So that is, is huge. Um, also, every um, program has. A, a committee that meets, a partnership committee that meets with local business and industry that come in and help. Um, inform our programming, inform what's happening in the classroom, and oftentimes those partnerships lead to. Um, jobs right after graduation. So that is huge. There's a construct, we have career day this Wednesday, and there'll be sixty six um. Business and industry partners that will be here, both in the morning and the afternoon for our, both our high school and middle school learners. Some of um, those individuals will have job applications right with them, looking to hire our seniors right after graduation. Looking to offer part-time um, employment. For our juniors or other learners who are of employment age. And I'll use an example, we had a. And I'll use an example, we had a construction company in Swansea reach out to us and they said, we need, we need workers, we need. We want to employ people right after they graduate. So they're going to come in, they're going to do all of the sessions and they're going to help learners fill out those applications and talk about employment. So our students are skilled, they're ready for employment, they're, they leave with the industry certifications with college credit. These programs are amazing and provide additional opportunities for our learners after they graduate. I mean, it's exciting and I think. What's been difficult is the fact that our learners have all asked for cosmetology, culinary arts, those are very popular programs. And we can't send them to Keene. First of all, they also have to transport themselves, there's no transportation to Keene. So that's a barrier for our learners, but also definitely the time crunch and the schedule. For our learners. So the fact that we can. Bring these programs here, I I think about the one of the first meetings I had when I started here. Almost two summers ago was with two learners looking for cosmetology. And so one was able to do it, the other wasn't able to do it, and that was really unfortunate. And I think what you'll hear from the learners is they want to stay connected to their home school. They're really not interested in spending half of their day traveling outside of our district. It impacts a lot of other programming or access to clubs and athletics and work opportunities. So we want to keep our our learners close.
One of the high school weird day presenters is eat more cake. How was that fair to any of the others?
But they didn't eat a lot of cake, I'll just tell you, they talked a lot about other things.
Lot of business startup conversations, which were actually very eye opening for the learners. It was in this, I don't know if anybody knows the eat more cake story, but she started her business from her home kitchen. And like really worked over years to build it up. And then had a tiny little storefront and she was kind of just having people come in. And now she has like a thriving business in Keene, but she. The kids were, I want to, I want to be in business, I want to be a business. And she did a really nice job kind of walking them through what sorts of things they want to start doing now to plan for that. It was really good.
Um, and in addition to the sixty plus. Members of the community that are coming in and doing those mini workshops for our learners. We also are having a college career expo where we'll have thirty additional partners. From the workforce, but also from our colleges and New Hampshire colleges that will be there. And all learners will have the opportunity to attend that fair.
I think are all branches of the military also sending somebody as well.
So I give Dana Jackson kudos to her because she's been the main person organizing all of this. It's just amazing. It's very exciting. To bring the community into our school, to have our learners learn more about the options that are available in their local community. Because even if they go off to school, we want our learners to come back. We want them to know what's available for them here in Jaffrey Ridge.
There was some conversation at the education committee about. Horse studies and and horticulture, which. Actually is another thing we we didn't pull as much data about. We used to have a horticulture program here and there currently is not one in this area. So I don't believe that would be feasible if we were expanding only here on this campus. But again, it kind of lends some conversation to looking at that Route two oh two property. That is that that could be a genuinely high interest and impactful program.
So David. From the education committee, you know, I support the whole thing here. Especially with the additional. Courses for cosmetology and culinary arts. Based on some of the visioning that's been done tonight. I think that. From my perspective, to get from visioning to actual. Doing anything, we need to do some planning.
Right.
And. That means to me that we need to have a vision for the entire. Center for exploratory learning. Campus, which may be multiple buildings, it might be a single large building, I don't know. But if we have to have architectural work done this fall, we need to look at it from two perspectives. What can we get done? Between now and the fall that we can actually get architectural drawings for. And the other one is, what is our long term look at this campus and what does it include? And when should we? Build the different pieces because there's a different approach. There's one approach that says, gee, we want to pass this multimillion dollar bond. There's another approach, which I think John mentioned, was if you. Have a capital fund and you can put so much in it each year. To achieve these different milestones. Then you might be able to do it without a bond, you might be able to get it funded upfront. Instead of, you know, going in the hole and worrying about what the bond interest rates are and all those things. So. My suggestion would be. Like tomorrow. We need to get a team formed to start doing the planning for this. And hits, get some things done and within the timeframes that you're allocated here. Because. I think I'm repeating myself, but clearly, we can't. Come up with a. Architectural drawings for a complete off, you know, campus down there. And that timeframe is just impossible. So my my vote would be to to accept it, move forward with it. And. But get started today on what the the whole campus is going to look like if we're planning on building anything.
We have an RFP written up minus some of the details. Which will be the important details. The details of location, renovation versus new, all that. So they're just the things that we'd have to put into it, a scenic. I seen it's a little bit further ahead in their process because they're. They're they're very specific about what they're doing, they already have the automotive, they want to put add diesel. It's all on our campus, they know, I mean, it's cookie cutter, not, I'm not saying that in a negative way, it's, they're doing some great work over there. But not talking about expansion, different locations, you know, tearing things, all that type of stuff. It's very different, or was it different if we were to think about?
I have a couple of questions, as far as the architecture work that's going to be done upfront. Is that something that like we'd have the fund or would that be kind of rolled into afterwards? A part of that funding can be subsidized.
That's part of what the district would have to pay, but it does count as part of the twenty five percent.
Okay, so later on, it would.
We wouldn't get any of that back afterwards, but like if the total cost is X, we could deduct from our portion of it. We already paid for site work and architecture and things like that.
And as far I see a lot on here about just kind of the design, construction facilities. Does that also include like equipment? I imagine that like developing my cosmetology, you're going to need like chairs and sinks and for. It includes that as well. It's not just like the shell of the building, it's.
Some of that would be included in this. Other stuff, there's a grant called the Perkins Grant that can help, it basically builds programs. So we would have to apply for that as well. We're already guaranteed certain amounts of funding and there's an allocation that goes to the whole region fourteen every year. But the chunks of that that get awarded to programs are higher for newer programs versus older, more existing ones. So between this renovation grant as well as the Perkins Grant, and there's an industry recognized grant. So when you're building new industry recognized credentials, you can get a grant for, again, supplies and equipment for that. A good chunks of it initially would be funded, the cost over the long term would become obviously the staff.
Yep, 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 got it. Yeah, I just think overall, it's, you know. We'd be foolish not to be at least looking into it, given that it's, you know, seventy five percent subsidized, we know how expensive things are. And given the fact that it's going to be, you know, twenty five years before this opportunity is again. So I think we'd regret, you know, not putting a lot of effort into it, right? Yeah, if probably not guaranteed. But going on with what Charlie says. You know, time is of the essence as well. So if we, you know. Come up with some grand plan but aren't able to execute it and get it together in time, then, you know, maybe it's nothing, so. Totally agree with Charlie, just something to be considered as we as we go forward, if we really want to do something big, it's. You know, we need to have a real firm plan, real fast. So there might be an opportunity there to kind of develop. Maybe a couple of parallel paths, just to see, see what. What we want at the end.
I really appreciated the idea of doing a community. Planning group as well, because when you're talking a project of this scope, that's a twenty five year. You know, once it kind of once in an educational generation project. That's not something that I should be making a decision on alone or this group here, or probably this group alone. You know, it's, you're talking about asking a community to invest for the next two rounds of people coming through our schools. That to me feels like much heavier decision. That should be kind of shared and understood by a much wider group. So I really appreciated that. It's a great idea.
If I may share, recently, Mrs. Baker and I had a great opportunity to spend a day. We went to Spalding High School and we looked at their CTE center. Because we couldn't envision what this all would look like. I think that we would love to invite you if you would like to go see that center. It will be different than what we're exactly wanting to do, but they have culinary, they have cosmetology. Plus many more, and it really helped us envision what we could do.
And I think that the director was very generous in talking about. The process and the planning, like inflation, right, taking all of that into consideration. And some of the issues with the design that they had, and she was willing to share all of that. So to help us learn from maybe some mistakes that they made along the way. And she was willing to share all her binders and to help support us through the process. She was wonderful and the facility is is beautiful. But it was just nice for her to talk about the successes and the challenges and the things they would do different if they had a chance. I think that that was a a learning opportunity for us.
I think that we could reach out to this person and maybe schedule something if there's interest.
What was it called again? Spalding High School, it's in Rochester. And we got to talk to some of the teachers, they were in the classroom. And that was just really, and they were, they were part of the conversation and engaged in the renovation, the new programs. And so it was nice to to hear their feedback.
We came back very excited.
Well. You know, this is exciting news and all all on board with the. Concept. Just as like little tiny points. I had the opportunity. To spend some time in the emergency room recently. And with one of my kids and, you know, sitting there looking at all the plaques and realizing that. Well, maybe some of the schools might be looking for their one angel donor. Certainly, when you look at the waiting, the waiting room, it's like every chair is sponsored by someone. And if we think about putting this committee together and we think about. Maybe some of those business leaders in our commu- community. Might be people who be willing to sponsor a classroom. So as we choose our committee to also maybe think about people who might be potential donors.
Yeah.
Who would like to see their name on, you know, maybe the big plaque, but also the little plaques. In the room. And. I don't know if I had something else. And also. I think that our students are going to face a different future than what we have, where they're not. Most likely not going to have that one career that will last. So having this opportunity to experience different things in high school will really carry them forward. And I just think this is, could be a wonderful thing for our school district. So thank you for everything you've done so far.
What I heard was it's the freshman.
I wish. I I wish, you know, I'd like to start playing the lottery if I. I thought that was a winning game, you know?
Are there any other thoughts or comments? About this? I have a question. I heard what Charlie said and. Supported about. The idea of, you know, getting a planning process going. But also this notion that. You know, putting together a. A plan for. All all or several of these new endeavors in the CTE. Would be one thing if we do it on site, if we're talking about. Envisioning a use of that property out on two oh two, it feels like that is a bigger community process. So can we do both things at the same time? Is there a way to have two tracks that don't necessarily diverge, but that? You know, whichever whichever way it goes, you can have the. The CTE concept. Well, you know, fleshed out. Design book. What, how do we? That that really is part of the whole process. Once you do your visioning. Then you say, you know, how much of it can I get done in in this time period? And. Take care of that piece and in parallel with it. While you do your visioning, you plan on when you're going to do the architectural work for the different pieces. Right? So it's just, it's a, it's a matter of. I don't know if you're familiar with critical path analysis. But there's a critical path here that we've got, that we have a timeframe to get certain things done. And if it's limited to renovation. That's the only thing we can do within that timeframe, then we need to move ahead with it. We also need, if we're going to move ahead with any. Education center. Then we need to do the visioning for that, we need to determine what we need to be arqueal. What the different pieces are, what the different architectural, in other words, what do you need first? Do you need an auditorium first? Or do you need a? CTE center first? Or do you need a? Gymnasium or whatever it is you plan on putting in there? Okay, you need to do the visioning and then you need to determine timeframe, what is achievable? And we know that there's certain things that we have to get done in a hurry. And those can be done. As part of bigger picture.
And something else to consider is that if you do a parameter renovation on this campus. Of with three different programs plus new construction, that's a lot of stuff happening while schools in session. A lot of vehicles, a lot of noise, a lot of, you know, there's a big plan that has to be put in place or worked. When exit or high, when I was over there and they were going to renovate. Like do a huge renovation of that school, what they were going to be. Taking for space, what they were going to be moving people over this way, people, the amount of, you know. Sound that they were going to have to be dealing with for. Well, it sounds like two years because the construction, like they're not saying it's going to be done till twenty seven.
So even if you do put a center in, right, one of the things as far as your planning is concerned. Is expansion, you have to plan for growth. Assuming that the center is going to expand. So. I mean, it's 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 integrated, it has to be. You know, the one line for whatever we're doing for this grant. And the rest of it for what we want. And state, what are, what is our vision, you know, twenty five years to now, do you want a stadium there, whatever?
Yes.
I mean, those is, that's the visioning.
Yeah.
You know, you start out, I was thinking outside the box when you do your visioning, but then you start to narrow it down and scope.
You'd make a lot of money if you could do swimming.
I don't want to go there. I think that was the one thing that we didn't want to have. Just I'm joking about the one.
Listen, you can have like the the floor that opens so that we could dual purpose it, okay? You know? We got ideas. So what are we approving? What is the initial approval? Because there's a lot of pieces. What is this approval tonight?
Approval of concept.
Cool concept. Wow, this is a. Okay. It's going to take a few meetings.
So David, are you saying move forward with the concept of culinary?
Yes.
Can you dislabel the concept?
So this would be approving the concept of basically pursuing this opportunity. And adding culinary cosmetology and elements of that forensic science law enforcement track.
What what will the approving the concept do for like a next step?
That will allow us to start doing the applications for the new courses and get pulling the data. It will allow for the conversation about forming that committee and starting to do the visioning work. It will basically signal that the board is wanting to move forward in some way, so we won't spend all sorts of hours.
You can get architects to.
So like to Charlie's end of it. It can start.
Yeah.
The process of rolling this ball.
On this one thousand step path.
This paper.
Can any of these programs happen without the renovation slash rebuilding?
Not with our current space, I mean, a a true. Not with our current space. I mean, a a true culinary program requires a front and backup house kind of setup. Or at least like a professional kitchen, and we don't have either of those currently. Um, and a cosmetology program. I suppose if you, if we like gutted out our STEM area on the second floor of the current building out here. And we're had a place to relocate it, you could possibly set that up as a space, but it. Again, it's pretty tight and the ceiling kind of does this on the side and. So cosmetology is more possible to do in our current space, but again, we're pretty limited as it is.
Sorry, is there a limit um either? Per school or the state as a whole as to how much they'll provide, you know, that seventy five percent, that they kind of. Pars that they only like allow so many regions or schools to do it every year so that they can guarantee the money. I would just hate to see us put together a plan and then, you know.
It's a, there's only a a set number of schools each portion of the cycle. So they they fund it based on the biennium of the budget cycle, so whatever schools are in our cycle. That get approved, it gets put into the next two-year budget, so they guarantee that the money's available.
And I think, and maybe I'm mistaken, maybe it's a different thing, but um. I think this year out of nineteen's.
That's a diff, that's just your general building aid. The the CTE grants are guaranteed, but they're on a very strict twenty-five-year cycle.
But at least to your point, that would be part of the overall visioning, so if you're talking about multiple, like, you wanna do this one. In this timeframe, this in this timeframe, so your CTE, you have some other project or whatever like that. You then go and would enter that. Yeah, we can say, listen, we don't have facilities, come to our Pratt. You can't even say, you're like, okay, you can have it. That's, you know, you get money from. That's what they, they they do that on a needed basis.
David, just for clarification, you've mentioned that the site here is obviously very limited. But if we were. Not to get approval or for or if the community process wasn't clear about using the two O two site. We could still do something here, but it would require more of a.
It would require an expansion of the, if we truly wanted to add both of those programs, it would require an ex- either an expansion of the current. Kind of teardrop seat spaced building into a larger. More kind of normal shape that could house more classes or an expansion on some other part of the building.
So I have one other question. I, when I look at people around the room and I think of here on the school board. But especially you folks there, I know you have other jobs and that uh time is limited and all those other jobs. Are just as important to everyone. As what we're talking about, maybe more so your first priority. Is what you're doing already. What what about the? The work involved in initiating and then carrying through this visioning and planning process? How would you? How how do you think we can do that? Who can do that? Who are the bodies? Would you want input from s- school board members? Do you have staff that you think can put aside some time? Or how, what what are your thoughts?
I mean, I think a combination of administration, school board members, definitely students and parents, and then just general community members, so I'm. I'm not a setting up a visioning se- session expert, but I would think having. At least a sample from all of our different stakeholder groups that can meet somewhat regularly and do that visioning work would be important. And I think I I would definitely wanna be a part of that that group and that conversation, but I'm not sure that I I'm the best person to pull all those pieces together. I could, I could do it, but I think, again, I think it's a bigger conversation than the middle high school principal.
Yeah, you've already got a lot on your plate, no doubt, probably is true of the people to your right and your left too, so.
I I am, I know it's it's that piece a little bit, but I even, I feel like it's even more so that this, you're talking about kind of a whole community. Vision, which is now including a a really wonderful concept of developing a community center. I I feel like it would be, it would be weird for me to be the one kind of leading that conversation, if that makes sense. Because, because I would probably just keep on bringing us back here to this and missing the boat on that bigger conversation just by nature of. Where my mind tends to go with stuff like this.
So I guess I put the same question to you. What, do you have any thoughts on how we can move this forward? Given that we all have.
Actually, some of this mimics parallels to the first to eight. Planning grants, like obviously when you're planning your grant, but getting people together, getting that forty. Fifty individuals together, bringing them together on a regular basis. You know, creating vision and going from there, similar to our strategic design, not so complicated.
That's what I keep visioning in my head, the mini strategic design conversation.
And it could be done, you know, you gotta have have some time set aside. Uh, and we have already engaged certain recent people in different parts of the conversation, so it's sounding, we're starting from scratch. From an ideas standpoint. Um, so we just have to perhaps have a few smaller internal meetings first to. Identify kind of how we wanna go forward. And what, and then get the invitations and then, you know, so.
The business world, we establish a project manager and many along the team, different departments. And this is, this is. We have a singular focus. Supposed to. Joint responsibilities. Somehow rather, when you're up against a timeline, great responsibilities. Doesn't necessarily work too bad. All right, so we're looking for. An approval of a concept. Of pursuing these CTE expansion ideas that have been presented.
I make a motion to approve the concept.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Kim, and thank you, Daisy. Is there any discussion? Any more discussion?
Um, I'd like to just add into what you were saying, uh, the next time we hear from. The next steps, um. Whether it be a project manager, a focus group, I would like to know who the leadership is being designated to. And, yeah, so I, that, you know, I think that that's sort of what I was. So as as you're putting together the plans, um, and know who the leadership be, even and the leadership of you. Let's give us, give us other names of who is really checking deadlines, making sure that all the Ts are crossed. Uh, yeah, as this process. Could be a school board member, could be, yeah, whatever, like, or or a team of people.
Someone needs to be driving the process.
Who's driving this, this, who's driving the bus?
Okay, any other comments? Well, let me say all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed? Saying none? That would be seven zero, okay? So, thank you. And so now we're past CTE and moving on to. Move the route to O two school district property. Are we discussing that or have we discussed that already?
What was it originally on for? Wasn't this?
Well, well, it was originally on, okay, that's that's a good question, actually. We did get a proposal from a local realtor, Mark Keager. About six months ago. He came to us and said, you know, that land out there is valuable and. We, he knew that the price that the land could bring. Back uh, last time it was looked at about five or six years ago. That it was low, but he advised us that we could probably get more for it now and that if we're looking to. Uh, s- sell the land, that this could be a time to do that. Now, since then, a number of other people have mentioned the land, including most recently, uh. You know, someone from the town of Jaffrey in a casual conversation said that the planning board was looking at. Whether or not there was uh room for affordable housing and pointed out that there's a lot of need. Uh, in the community. We've also heard from some people in Ridge that there's interest. And yet, at the same time, uh, another group has come forward about four or five months ago. Talking about a renewable energy opportunity. Where the installation of solar on four acres of that hundred acre site. Could actually produce quite a bit of energy. Enough energy that it could be sold to the electric grid and produce revenue for the district. Now, those are three ideas, but you've heard that there's other ideas out there, including the ones that Ruben was referring to tonight and. During this last six months, certainly the conversation has been that although a one-time payout. Would have benefits and would go to help. Alleviate uh taxes. That one-time payout would be relatively small, perhaps compared to, you know, the size of our budget. And so, you know, the question is, what should we do? Does it make sense for us to think about an expansion and the idea of a uh. An experiential learning center for SAU forty-seven? Or is it better to uh sell the land and move on from there? And. My two cents, yeah, my two cents is. We're gonna be signed for just about what we paid for many years ago. And it's property that's jointly owned by Jen, Randy and Jaffrey. So it's more or less a the community property, and I think the use of it could be for community purposes. Land is finite. Once it's gone, it's gone, so you better make the best use of it that you can.
Then could you be able to put the map up on it? Could you give us the visual of this property? If I have, we had it not that long ago, I know.
It would probably be in a uh one of Trey's agendas. It's my guess um for facilities committee meetings. We have access to any of those. I'll look for it, well. You're having conversation.
If we're building, potentially building this. Learning center. I'm assuming we could semi dual purpose and still do the solar panels. Someplace on a hundred acres and still have a center. And then you did have that electricity to. Make that building go and then some. They. Offset the cost. Yeah.
I think that's right, Daisy.
No, I I'm with Charlie, we. If we sold this land. We would just barely break even and we wouldn't get it back, you know, we couldn't possibly. Afford to buy it back, never mind, there's probably not many hundred acre acre parcels left. In this world.
Certainly not one that is on the border of the two communities. However, I do think that it is conceivable that the market might. Allow us to get more for the property now than what we paid for. And so I think, you know, that needs to go into our thinking. Would we still feel the same if we learned that we could get twice what we paid for? For example, and I I ask that because I think that that question, you know, is something we have to consider.
When did we purchase the property?
I would say about twenty years ago, not exactly sure, could have been twenty-three. Twenty-five.
Yeah, I think where my mind is at on this, certainly that, you know, with with without any kind of. Long-term like capital plan, you know, for what, for our existing facilities and um. You know, the potential expansion of these other programs, I think it would be. You know, a bit foolish to go selling kind of the only. Potential uh area of expansion, and cer- certainly doesn't seem like there's much opportunity for expansion on this campus, um. So certainly, I think, holding on to the land, at least with what I know now is a is a good idea. But also, I mean, it makes sense to start, if we've held it for twenty years and done nothing with it, you know. And it is valuable, it makes sense to, you know, be looking at options for it. At least considering it, and these options that are proposed tonight, you know, may be feasible, may not be, but I think it makes sense to, you know. Make the most of the assets we have, right? Think about if we sold it now and then decided we wanted to buy a similar hundred acre parcel of land, you know, ten years from now.
It wouldn't be there.
Yeah, it doesn't exist, right? So no matter, exactly, good point. So even if it was. You know, theoretically, we could get it for the same price, well, no, you can't because it. You can't buy it no matter how much money you have, it simply won't exist. So, I mean, if if the decisions, if there's a decision to be made tonight, I think it's. In my mind, you know, don't sell it, certainly explore options for it, it's a valuable asset. You know, with a a limited, very short-term benefit, I think, to selling it versus potential, you know, huge. Uh, long-term benefit to keeping it.
All right, oh, okay, you have, I was gonna give you the entire last appraisal report that we have.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. So this is from the forestry documents, there's a lot of other maps in here. For various things, so if there's a map that you're wanting.
This while we're, while Nick is looking at that. It's not the intention to make a decision tonight, just to initiate.
Yeah, yeah, now it's just kind of where my head is at, like, if there were a decision, right, that's kind of. The the way I'm thinking, it's like, yes, absolutely, explore. Possibilities, you know, if, you know, if and when the time allows, we know that's a valuable asset, but I think it's, you know. In my mind, anyway, it's, you know, too short-sighted to think about. Um, selling it. To me, that would be off the table.
And certainly during this community visioning process, there'll be an opportunity to get input from the community and to. Look further at uh at the options.
I mean, if we didn't have busing, a driver shortage and getting buses weren't so expensive, it would be. Really cool just to even get the students out there now. I mean, the ecology class goes out to Children's Woods. But, oh my goodness, going to this site.
It is accessible from the rail trail, but it would be. I don't know, you don't wanna be able.
Yeah, or a hiking club or something.
I just sent the board, all the board members. The la- I mean, two thousand eighteen appraisal of the property, which has a lot of information. Apart from just the pictures and numbers.
I think the kids would be dying for a community center. For sure, we're always looking for something to do. Experiential learning area, I mean.
So with the approval of. The concept.
Sorry.
And the idea of moving forward with um a dream property, a dream community center. Is there an idea of when you could actually have a um. Here is what renovation would physically and financially look like.
Here is what building a new community center to house this would physically and physically look like. Is that something that we could ask for in?
The RFP, we could ask for over like draw or drawing is for two different. Excellent approaches.
Right.
Renovation and for.
So when would you have that? Because and then you have an architect.
And there is one architect out there, one architectural firm that seems to be. The one that is designing the overwhelming majority of these C T centers, but we still want to go see what's happening.
Because we'd have to go to bid for the architect, correct?
But Ruben, you said there is rails to trails access there?
Yes, yeah.
And what's the status of the, we've mentioned the trees of the cutting?
Well, that's that's also important point that we haven't cut yet because of the camp, there's a lot.
Yeah, it was postponed because we didn't have a solid freeze and can't get the equipment in there.
So the 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 company that was scheduled to do it and said that we'd do it in the winter, did write to John McClair. Say this is most extraordinary winter they've experienced in terms of the lack of frozen ground. And I believe their plan is to do it once the spring. Rains have dried up.
Later on, and then at the earliest. But there they would be also looking to build an access road, am I correct? And there is some sort of.
Old Route, old Route.
Two O two.
Runs through. We can't see it on this map.
If I'm not mistaken, it roughly follows that red line. That comes down from the top left, well, no, not that line, sorry, but if you see Route two O two there. Where that red line intersects with Route two O two, somewhere around there. Old Route two O two.
More or less parallel.
Yeah. And it was the recommendation of the. Of the committee that's been meeting on the solar array that that we asked the lumber company to. Clearcut the four acre piece where the solar array would potentially go. And. The committee did vote in the affirmative on that. And the basis of that was that they felt it could be done for little or no cost because of the. Extra timber that would be available, and they also felt that the amount of. Clearcutting will be fairly minimal, given the amount of forest cover there. So environmentally, in other words, that. Doing was would be acceptable.
Plus, you have that view. So.
So there's the conversation started.
That's that's the two of your.
Okay, so if 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 anybody else, is anything else they'd like to add at this time, there'll be other opportunities, I'm sure. But we could also move on to the discussion or the action item actually on J R M S C H S culture. And identity.
So before you make hopefully the decision tonight, we've just pulled back up the same slideshow from back in February. I will very, very briefly go through because we've already done it once, but just in case there's things to to remind, and I did add. A couple of slides of elementary data from J G S. I did not get any data from R M S, there was just some timed issues with. Elementary kids needing more one-to-one attention when they do things like that, so, but I have some data from J G S to share. So just a very quick reminder, here's our journey so far, back in twenty eighteen, started combining some resources. Twenty nineteen and twenty, we started to unify our systems and gave act more access to J R M S learners for C H S classes. Twenty to twenty-one, we expanded the number of classes, made the kind of the first floor, kind of the shared space for the two schools. And then this year, our learner support processes, last year and this year, have become more unified, we built out some mentoring things. For both middle and high school transition and some clubs and activities now also include both middle and high school grade spans. Some things that have changed, our staff have been combined in many areas, I think we're up to, I don't have the exact percentage, I think it's further down, but about a third of the staff is now shared. More collaboration is happening between like disciplines sort of across the board. Um, some avenues have continued to grow for mentoring and peer support, especially from older learners to younger. And we've continued to work on a common vision for learning that has led to joint accreditation with N E S. Things that have remained the same, we still isolate middle and high school traditions, we've kept celebrations and transitions, those are very important. We continue to have separate core instruction areas and we still focus on a middle school, kind of circling the wagons for social emotional need philosophy at the middle grades. Some current barriers, learners have need to have a strong identity to feel like a sense of belonging to their school exists for them. Very hard to develop right now with two different buildings, sorry, two different identities in one building and with one overall staff. The middle school is basically high and dry right now with school identity. Um, the Pratt has always been an Oriole Conan heavy place, but there's really no other space left that is a cardinal space. Um, and I know Miss Lynn's dad will have some things about that further down. Um, staff, again, we have a lot of shared staff, it's hard for them. Finding a way to have a sense of belonging to one side of the school versus the other, even little things like spear weeks, very difficult when you're split between two buildings. Systems currently have to stay separate, again, one school allows you to bring those back together and same with the families. Having to go through the same system, but for two different schools for multiple children creates unnecessary barriers. Skip this. Yeah, let's just say the same stuff. Um, so this skip skip please. Yep, that one, this was the initial survey that was open to the entire kind of community, parents, learners. Um, teachers, et cetera. So this question is one that was duplicated at J G S, you can see the kind of spread, the plurality of individuals. Five in this case was strong kind of feelings towards, so the majority was leaning towards the Oriole being important to them, were very important, the plurality was. At that level five. This is the overall picture with Cardinal, again, kind of the opposite, one was don't really care, heavy on that side. Which mascot we prefer, Orioles sixty-six percent and the others kind of break down from there. Color scheme was a sliding scale, one was strongly orange and black, five was strongly red and blue. And then you could scale in the middle again, out of the seven hundred and four responses, sixty percent, just under that, wanted orange and black strongly. Which is mirrored here and the actual question about which color you want to see. How important the name Conan is, again, very strongly, about sixty percent. Agree or strongly agree that this is the or placed importance at the highest levels on this. At J G S, it was, whoops, nope, back one, please, thank you, this is J G S. There's a pattern with the elementary data, they're somewhat indecisive. Um, kind of age appropriate for that grade level, but they're kind of in the middle, slight lean towards not so important. Jaffrey Ridge, this is the overall survey for seven hundred and four responses, community, et cetera, about sixty percent-ish. Yeah, fifty percent-ish, actually, tilting towards not super important. On the elementary level, kind of the opposite, sixty percent is tilting towards it was important. I should note that there were sixty-one J G S responses, eighteen in grade three, I think it was twenty in grade four, like eighteen in grade five. The name preference, overall results, forty-six point seven percent, Conan Middle High School, thirty-four percent, Jaffrey Ridge Middle School, Conan High School. Many iterations of that on the side there that are tiny and can't really be seen, but. When you add up all the iterations of Conan, it was just over fifty percent that advocated for a Conan name. This was the J G S results, much more split, Conan Middle High School was twenty-three percent, Jaffrey Ridge Middle High School was thirty percent. Um, the current name was thirty percent, then you get some interesting kind of singletons there, some of them are. Pretty adorable kind of elementary types of names. Um, we had. Conan Junior High, Jaffrey Memorial School, Ridge Memorial School, J G S. Jaffrey Ridge Middle and High School, Jaffrey Ridge Have Fun School, I like that one a lot. Conan Junior High, J G S Elementary, C H S, Jaffrey Junior High, so again, kind of a diverse range there.
So the Jaffrey Ridge Have Fun School. Be a better name than the experiential center.
Um, this is, so now we're just looking at kind of a breakdown of. Who said what, so we can skip over this because it was already presented and it gets very wordy, but it basically broke down by staff, et cetera. The the common vein is that the overarching, regardless of group preference. Was to have some version of a Conan name as the name for the school, the learners were closely split. Between current name and a Conan name, but when you looked at those advocating some unified name altogether, even they were at about fifty-four percent for a unified name. So there's there's very clear patterns, um, I had presented a bunch of comments, which I'm not going to read all of them again, so we can just keep right on going. I'm not trying to waste anybody's time, but just want to give you kind of a reminder of where we were at. Um, if no changes are made. We would keep obviously things as they are now, this is not like a no decision dramatically changes things, we would just continue the status quo. One impact would be the separation of our alma reporting systems, in order to have one flow of the kind of academic reporting to the state. We have to have one shared identity with the state, so that would be one piece, we would have to separate that back out, which would be a shift from what we're doing now with web to school. There would be some N E S impacts, um, there was a strong recommendation to finalize what the N E S accreditors saw as an ongoing journey. To make the school identity one kind of consistent identity, um, J R M S would still be kind of in the lurch. Again, there there is definitely a a lack of inclusion of J R M S and it's not intentional. It's just the reality when you have so many spaces that are shared, um, it's really hard to merge. A cardinal that and red and blue color schemes in our gym with an Oriole and orange and black. Do you want to speak to that for one second from what some learners have done in response to that?
In response to that, um, I get posters, um, with red and blue, um, markers. That say what sports that they have and they just asked me to put the posters up in the Pratt. Um, so that they have their school colors, especially when they're going there every day for P E.
Which is a creative solution, but it's really, it's hard when you go into the Pratt with middle schoolers and all they get is these little. Kind of hand-drawn signs put up, which is okay, but everything else is Oriole. And right down to when we have visiting teams coming in for J R M S games that are hosted here, a lot of times the visiting teams are confused, you know. What, this is your home game, there's no symbolism, no anything that states that this is a part of J G, uh, J R M S, so.
I mean, it, I can bring up a ton of things, but for an example, we now do all of our team sports and we all have our team photos and we have our photo day. With, um, light touch and you go into the Pratt. And there are our middle schoolers in red and and blue and they are a bird, but our bird's nest is the cardinal. You know, so so where do they sit and. Uh, no, sorry, where do where do my Cardinals sit? And so. In truth, in the fall, they were like, well, Miss Lynn said, should we go on this wall so that they weren't near it? Um, so they identify the fact that. Everybody loves the Pratt and they want to have that same love and passion, they just really don't feel like they fit in and their sports don't. Fit in, but and again, they're there for for gym and those kind of things. And I will tell you though, when we go on trips and it just says J R M S across their chest. Nobody really knows who they are either, we walk into gyms and people are like, oh, where are you from? Who are you? Um, when we're talking one thing, everybody knows that you can create the spirit and the energy. By having something that everybody is attracted to, and I I mean, again, Conan can. It is what it is, people recognize it, but that same love and spirit should be with with our middle schoolers. I always, I, when I tell people to come to the school to go to the main office. Where are you telling people to go? I you're, right, you, that's there, but that's. Middle school parents are supposed to go there, but nobody ever says that, I mean, you, I never say, oh, I always say. Go to the main office and and most times I mess up and I say, go to the main office, go to the Conan main office, go to three Conan way. Go there, um, so again, I don't feel like. There's that identity and again, when we're branding and those kind of things, and I don't know if you want me to expand, but. When we're talking about uniforms and branding the school and, you know, I know we don't all want to talk about social media, but. You have seven seconds to 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 make that right initial thing. When people are driving up to the school and I know we can't do a whole lot of things. It's old, but we could brand it and even if you were going to put flags and things, but it should be. The colors and it should be the colors for that whole building, so when you drive into that parking lot, our parking lot is nice, people know where they're coming to. And it shouldn't matter if it's a sixth grader, but and please remember this. When I first started here, everybody said the biggest problem we have is with our fifth graders transitioning to. J R M S, and wouldn't it be nice that if they all knew if they came from Ridge or they came from, they're all here. And they're going to be supported by one, one brand. And and again, I think it's going to be the corner Oriole that would inspire all of these young people to feel comfortable. It was up there, we have web group, we have link group, but again, everybody should be talking the same, same thing all the time. Um, and so that everybody feels that that team spirit. We mentioned the Pratt, but by the way, we have a beautiful track and everybody talks about our track, when you drive up there, the only thing you see.
Oriole Athletic Complex.
It's Oriole Athletic Complex, and so again, our numbers for the middle school are incredible. Our participation numbers are incredible and David doesn't realize, but even more and more. Clubs and activities are becoming combined, there's not a separation, which I think is great because the high school students. See the importance of them, middle schoolers belonging, and I do think they take pride in being the mentors. I I think that that's there and they they feel good about it. The whole high school group down here enjoyed the basketball program, the. The middle school basketball program, they were in the Pratt, they were there to cheer. You brought it up, I had an Oriole running around. But we put the J R M S uniform on him for one game. So that he could inspire the the middle schoolers, but wouldn't it be nice that the Oriole could just come out for everything, right? For every team, everything that we do that he's just walking around and we don't have to try to go find two birds. Again, I just. I love the idea for the middle school kids to feel like they've they've made it here and they're all a part of it and they don't have to be shy about. The enthusiasm and the team spirit that they have, and they really do look up for to the to the high school kids, but they really want to be. Part of it, again, be it fields, be it the Pratt, but I think it's just even in the hallways and. This year I have, I've seen a lot of great high schoolers take these middle schoolers under their wing, haha, fun on it. But but I think they all want to be, I think, I think actually if I say it, I think the students are are saying, giving their voice that. That they want everybody to be included and it doesn't matter what grade they are, they're in the building, they shall be wearing the same colors.
So the middle school, like, let's say it was all. Conan Middle High, whatever we're doing, they would also adopt black and orange. They'd be like little mini Orioles.
That's my, that's our, that was our recommendation and that continues to be our recommendation, I'm not advocating that we. Do everything as middle schoolers with high schoolers, but there, when you look at, I'll use Menadnock as an example. It's Menadnock Middle High School, they're all the Huskies, they share a color, there's an opportunity there for those middle schoolers to express. An identity in their shared space and become a part of that kind of husky culture right away, so when they get to high school, it isn't. Okay, I spent three years as a cardinal in the same exact building with a lot of the same teachers and suddenly I'm shifting my mindset to an Oriole. Now I get to have the building kind of reflect who I am, it's just part of who they are as a school and that's what we're, that's what we are advocating kind of doing. We're advocating, if you want to click ahead. To the little three-pronged. Yep, one more, yep, that's what we're advocating, we're already, we've already done number three. We are already sharing resources, it's done, that that decision was twenty eighteen, we've just been plugging away at that, so that's that we control internally and we're doing it. Shared values, yep, we got that one down, our handbooks are aligned, our. Shared values. Yep. We got that one down. Our handbooks are aligned. Our philosophy as a district centers around a mission statement of inspiring, empowering and engaging learners. We've implemented our versions of that here to make learners have that value. The piece that we haven't done is given a shared identity. So the six through twelve. Complex that we have here guides our learners consistently and makes all of them feel like they belong here. Not like they belong, when JRMS is playing, they get to use the Pratt from the high school. It's theirs too, because they should be part of the school community. So some things that we're not ever advocating changing, or at least that's not what this discussion is about. Grade specific stuff. That always is important. In fact, we're looking at bringing some of that back for the middle school. There's conversation about developing an in-house. AHT tour because the Dakota YMCA doesn't do that anymore. So there, that's a tradition we're trying to bring back. Middle level celebrations, very, very important. We're looking at adding a fifth to sixth grade transition program this year. Specifically to recognize the value of that transition and growing the role of the link crew and developing the ninth grade transition. Those things have nothing to do with. Giving identity and culture that's consistent. For instruction. Where learners are in those core classes, it's still important to keep that middle school kind of wraparound model available and, and, um, focused on them. And the teaming differences for age appropriate interventions, absolutely. That doesn't change with the name. Those things are just good practice that are part of who we are as a school. So our recommendation. We would ask once again to kind of unify formally, finish the process, make us one instructional entity. We're recommending the overall overwhelming kind of majority of feedback Conan Middle High School as the shared name. Recommending one Orioles mascot that transcends the two grade spans and orange and black as a consistent color. So we can start branding our school for all kids to feel included and welcomed.
It comes CMH.
You'd have, yeah, CMHS.
CMHS, okay.
Conan Middle High School.
I didn't have used them all already.
We could just do CMH, but.
Right, right. Gotcha.
So two things that I would like to just say, uh, Heather amazing job. Beautifully passionately involved and thank you for that. And I just love how you squeezed in the street address.
Yeah.
This is Conan Way. The middle school is on Conan Way. I love that. And the second thing that, that I want to note is, um. Heather, am I correct that in your presentation in your slideshow, you had maybe thirty-four, thirty-five respondents? To what could feasibly, now me, those people probably didn't know. But feasibly, we're talking a tens of million dollar project. That you had thirty-four respondents to. That's correct, right?
Yes.
And there were seven hundred and four respondents to it.
Hundred and sixty-five with the GGS one.
Yeah, that's right. I had more with the GGS addition. Yeah.
Big disparity.
Ironic, but I'm, I'm off it.
Thank you for, um, polling the JGS students. I'm the one who requested that, um. I appreciate the updated information, the updated slides and that. One that you showed a couple of slides back with the three prong. Saying shared identity, shared resources, shared vision. Cause what I'm looking for out of this is, you know, we are the ones who are going to be at basketball games or at the movies and. Someone's going to come up to us and say, why did you change that name? And why did you just do it? You know, it's not something that's in the paper. And so I've been wondering like, what's my elevator speech? What's my pitch? What am I going to respond when people? Confront us like this and it will be a confrontation. It won't be a question, but I think that three prong, that one slide pretty much summed it up.
Nick, can you put that slide up? For people listening out there and everyone.
Shared identity, shared value, shared resources.
You've got two out of the three.
Yep. Yeah, that, that to me is sums it all up.
Name is the least of those.
Yeah.
Right, and the grand scheme of things, that's.
That's the thing that should have been the easiest part.
Most places go the opposite order. I think they did the right thing, getting those two harder ones kind of nailed down.
Yeah. So that, that's how we answered the. Why question right there.
Thanks Christine.
Sure.
All right. So yeah, I'll just say, uh, certainly I wasn't. Here for the first conversation this.
It was much more in depth. I apologize.
Nick had, Nick had sent along, Nick had sent along the package and, uh, the notes. So it was very helpful in kind of understanding it quickly. Um. But I think in my mind, I look at it and I think it preserves the important aspects of like the high school, which I think is very important. I know really this is motivated by improving the experience for the middle schoolers. Uh, but along the way, you don't want to somehow detract from the high school experience. I think this approach achieves that. Um, and really can be a bonus because what I saw in here, I don't think we went over it today is the opportunity to like. Increase that branding of like the Oriole, right? So it's not only could, is not a negative for the high schoolers, but it could be a positive as we say, like, you know, here's the new Oriole, right? Get them kind of excited about it. I think that's great. Um. You know, in preserving again, that middle school experience, I think is, is key, right? We're not. We're not voting on that today, right? Obviously we're just talking about the identity, but I think there are, you know, clear differences. You know, between a sixth grader at twelve years old and, and you know, a senior that's eighteen or nineteen that. You know, not everything can be shared. Certainly you guys have communicated that effectively. Think the poll results kind of speak for themselves. You know, very clearly in favor of the Conan and the Oriole, uh, which to me makes sense because I think that tradition is important. Certainly the, to the, especially the people in the community, right? That probably. Uh, I don't know, was the commute, was anybody outside of like the school community polled?
We sent this out publicly, um, Nick had it on the Facebook page for quite a while. It was.
I imagine most of the respondents were parents, uh, educators, staff.
The staff responses were the lowest number because there's just fewer of them.
But I, I bet if you were to just pull just the community, right? It would be very strongly in favor of Conan. So that doesn't change anything there. Um, and I, I do like the, the, the fact that it looks like it's a, like a rolled output. I mean, uh. Um. Like as you're rolling it out, it's a, it's like a three year plan, right? Because you know. Specifically for the middle school with the cardinal stuff. I mean, we just, I know students just bought like a whole bunch of Cardinals gear, right? I'd like it not to be like obsolete before it's even received. Um. So I think that's fair. No, because that's important. Your parents go and you know, we tell parents, we're not going to provide you a complete uniform. You can buy your shorts. You know, support the team store. Uh. You know, maybe get a year or two out of that. I think that's a, a fair consideration.
Yeah, it would take at least. I mean, we would not be able to replace many JRMS uniforms at all. Next year, you're talking at least a two year cycle to get.
Yeah. And I think it'll be important to communicate that, right? This is coming and, uh, I think that makes sense. So.
You kind of spoke of the opportunity to make it Oriole that like a sort of refreshed new Oriole. And that's one of the things that Heather and I have been meeting with, um, who the company Heather goes through for uniforms. We have an opportunity to potentially, uh, do a partnership with them of sorts where they would provide seven thousand dollars or so worth of branding work for us. Which would include engaging a committee of stakeholders. We would give kind of. Input in terms of what we want the Oriole to make sure it definitely has, what we want to see for, you know, the features of the Oriole. FYI, our current Oriole head is actually a raven head that somebody just changed some of the feathers to orange. We found that out. Um, and some of the kids were scandalized, the learners, what do you mean it's a raven? That was funny, but. Um, so we have an opportunity to kind of modernize and create an Oriole that reflects this, this process and is, is a modern iteration. And make that again, part of this whole school's identity here, which is exciting.
I didn't think they looked at it as much as they do, but.
They really do.
Basketball got, I don't know what we got, something, something that they were wearing. I don't know if it was warm up jerseys, whatever. The Oriole had a ponytail. And they were like, oh, right? What was it?
Yeah, I think it was our, uh.
Forgot it was you were here.
Was it our jerseys?
I feel like it might go, I don't, I feel like it was white.
No, it's a past, uh, championship, um, jersey, the T-shirt that somebody did and they put a ponytail on it.
And so, and it came back? No, because then you guys got this. Where I thought it.
They're, they're, they're championship T-shirts that you guys got in the past that have, somebody designed it and yes, it has.
Um, anyways, it was really funny because they, it was noticed. I was like, what?
Yep.
I didn't even look at it that closely.
They really do.
They really do. So they really do. Speaking from. Experience from being part of. The teacher side that was helping the elementary students at JGS when we were redoing the owl. Make sure you pay attention to the eyes. Because one of our first renditions had one eye going down and one. So. We learned from, I think it was a first grader. The eyes aren't looking at me. And we're like, what are you talking about? And they had to walk up to the board and like point to the teachers to show them like they're, the eyes aren't looking at me. For the adults in the room to even be like. Oh, I never even noticed that. To make sure your eyes are pointed in the correct direction.
Just, just one more thing and reading the comments for the people that were opposed to it, um. Wh- what I gathered from that is. You know, they. They were opposed to like the comment, like this whole thing.
Right.
Versus just the identity. I think we're here to complete that third leg. Um. And what I, what I gathered from those comments is that those people are, you know, wouldn't agree with one and two, which you know, to me is another discussion. All right. Right?
Is this a vote?
Yes. So we're looking for. Uh. A motion to approve this change.
Make a motion to approve the change to Conan Middle High School.
Okay. Is that the? Does that cover what? You're looking for?
Does that also give us the authority to make the school mascot colors aligned or does that also need to be part of the motion? I don't, that I don't know.
To, and, and all the changes that need to happen to unify. The current Conan High School with Jeffrey Mills. Jeffrey Mills Middle School. Including colors, mascots, name change. Wallpaper. Grateful I am. And I, and I don't even say this comically. How incredibly grateful I am to all of the predecessors. Who did not choose a mascot. That could cause us grief now. Hopefully. Uh, the Oriole is something we can absolutely stand behind and be proud of. And I am truly grateful. To the forethought of our predecessors to say this is valuable and, and we're going to be thinking about. The pictures we do this. So. I'm, I'm all behind an Oriole.
I'll second that motion.
Great.
Is it middle?
No slash.
No.
Slash is are very confusing.
Middle High School.
Good. Okay. Any further discussion?
You have to go a whole new sign up then?
So we had foresight when we designed the sign and they can simply swap out the faceplate at a much, 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 much lower cost.
Beautiful.
All right then. We're going to call a question.
To begin the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Right.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. And okay. There we have it. Thank you.
You guys got everything you asked for tonight.
Concept approved and a new name. It's wonderful. Thank you very much. Are you okay if we step out?
Yes, we are.
Thank you again.
Oh, I do have one more question though for Heather.
Yes.
Um, you mentioned the Spalding School. Uh, if there are takers, should we, how, how should we do this? Should we get in touch with you or?
Um. Yeah, just send me an email through the school, um, email system and I will, and I will put it together.
Okay, okay. Good deal.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next. Next action item is the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four school district calendar.
So last time we approved this already. Um, but we had miscalculated, um, based upon. Basically what we had done was we had shifted everything, but we had left the number of. Days on the side that like, like if you look at the calendar, you'll see like eighteen days of school, twenty days of school, whatever we had. So we added them up. Did not shift that final. Day. And so it seems small. It's like, oh, let's just move it over. We had actually a fair amount of conversation about final day of school and everything. So. Um, Nick, kind of how do you, how would you want to explain this right?
Yeah, um.
Need to do.
So we had a big debate and question about the last day of school and the idea of, is it going to be on a Monday? What's the impact? Cause the big change that we had at the last meeting was adding in that half day. On the, uh, twenty-second. Um. When this date in February got added in, it just didn't get taxed to the end of June. To extend that out. So under this. Proposal, if you add up all the days. You're getting the. Twenty-second half day, plus you're also getting. The, uh, last day on the Tuesday instead of the Monday. But I know the, the reason why we decided to bring it back to the board was because there was discussion about. The benefit of the last day being on a Monday and having the last teacher day potentially be on a Friday based on snow day coverage and things like that. So because there was so much debate and discussion about how that last day fell of the impact or potential impact. Um, brought it back to the board just to say, hey, it's really no big deal. We approve everything in concept and then it's just the last day is pushed out a day. Or do we have to make more substantial changes because there was so much discussion around that? Last day of school or whatever. Is it, so it could be as simple as just saying, okay, we agreed everything in concept. We just move it. Another day, or there could be more substantial. It just make sure that we have those one seventy-seven days of instruction. For, uh, students.
So Nick, is this calendar right here? Is this the one that was approved?
Um, this is the one that is approved with the exception of me just for now moving that data to use that.
So instead of.
So this would give you the one seventy-seven.
Instead of the green being on the tenth, it's now on the eleventh.
And that's if we have no snow days.
That's if there's no. No weather days. Yes.
Different ones with the weather days.
And silly question, but it is a week here and I see that you included that. Is that somebody did count these days, right? This isn't just switch over because that.
So we don't have to come to one last board meeting. I will one, I will once more quickly count the days to verify that everything is actually. That we don't have to. I'm just going to do it on this computer because again, having a little bit of a hard time seeing the, uh. Screen over there.
Just while Nick is doing that, our next item is going to be our. Board committee updates and committee assignments and. What I'm thinking is that we can do a quick update on anybody, any committee that is that's met since last time and. In terms of committee assignments. If you'd all like to just. Email and say what you'd like. We could do that tonight right here, or you can just send me an email and. We can make those assignments.
The past couple of years. We had a process for the last couple of years. Yeah, the past couple of years I sent out a survey. Um, and I can just recycle that template. And what that allows people to do is just indicate their choice preferences. And then I share that info with you and then you can finalize it based on where everybody falls.
Yeah, that sounds good. The word perfect.
And you'll make sure to have the journal times and like how often they meet and when they meet.
I mean, the when they meet is dictated by the committee. So if the committee changes. They can change the time. So usually the time's refreshed after the committee. You know, is revised, uh, because you know, obviously if a certain committee meets during the day and you have two members that can no longer do that, you have to. Change because the window of committee members, you only have three people on most committees. So you miss. Two of your people and you can't really hold a meeting. So that would be, I could put like these ones be monthly. Um, these ones be quarterly, things like that. But when it comes to the actual date and time setting, that's. The committee's responsibility once they.
So my apologies for interrupting you in the middle of your count. So.
Oh, that's okay. I, I got cleanly through one side.
So, um, when we were speaking about our early release days and whether or not. We should. Contact members of the community to give them the heads up like Parks and Recs in the library. I went ahead and I showed Julie at the Jaffrey. I went ahead and I showed Julie at the Jeffrey Public Library how to find her calendar. She was so thrilled. She did not know, did, was not comfortable navigating our website. Explain that no one had ever showed it to her and was just like, okay, so these are the days that you're planning an early release. Thank you. I know now and I know it for programming. And I thought, you know, that took me three minutes. We shouldn't make sure other people are Parks and Recs, the Ringe Library. Whoever else might be. Make sure they know how to navigate or find our calendar or uh send them a calendar. It was such a simple little thing, but she was like, wow, okay.
Maybe we need to do a. Two-minute navigate the website. Lesson every time. I'm sorry, what's that?
If they're not getting, it's not like super complicated. If they're not getting on the website to look for the calendar, they're not gonna watch tonight video.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I have not to be the dog downer, but I feel like. You open the website and it will say.
Yeah, but if you're not in the habit.
If you're not yet, and not even not in the habit, if you're just. It's not yet busy or or not computer savvy or whatever. You're just not gonna take the time to do that because. I know you're just not. It's like, forget it. Somebody will drop off paper. Somebody will let me know.
Yeah, like Julie doesn't live in the Jeffrey Ridge community, so.
Yeah.
May not have occurred to her before.
All right, so I've double-checked, triple-checked the calendar. This calendar right here. Would be correct if we were to approve it as is. That would be the first day as before. That would be adding in the twenty-second as a half day. Um, that would be, you know, having that kind of floating day in February for the primary. And that would be having the last day on the eleventh, which is a Tuesday.
So this is the proposed.
This would at this point be the proposed. Calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so how many of the snow days have we used up so far?
No, this is twenty.
This is next year.
Yeah, we, we finalized, well, we finalized, well, well, to Charlie's. Calendars last time, so one of them. That one for this year is all set. That one sounds correct. This one was because of the additional voting day. We accounted for it, but except that we uh. There's something that we summed up the, the numbers. We had, we didn't change one of the, the numbers and so.
Yeah, a few, a few things got moved around in the process leading up to the um presentation to the board. And then once we moved, shifted some of those final things around, there just wasn't that recount to account for the. Final day being dropped into February. So that day just wasn't counted. It was counted as a school day, not a, a no school day. So you had an extra day in February that now just has to be accounted for in uh June. Or I guess theoretically somewhere else.
And maybe perhaps this is not necessarily for tonight, but just something I want to talk about before is do we want to. Put forward some legislation that allows us to enter into remote learning timeframe and we have voting going on.
Yeah, did that work out the last time?
Well, I mean, it worked out last time because it was, yeah, I got special permission because of it was weather related.
I was going to ask you that. Is it, would we have to get some kind of special permission? Because it's not weather related. It's a voting situation.
They won't give us the special permission for anything other, weather related at this point in time.
Wait, I'm sorry. So then what did you just?
It's, we can do it for weather related purposes. Um, that one was kind of quasi-weather related, but they, so they up, they gave us the waiver on it.
Yeah.
I don't think that they would, I mean, they always ask again, but I do not believe that they would waive. That for voting.
Oh, I thought that's what he did.
Oh, because of our own policy.
What, what do you mean our own policy?
We have a policy that states that we'll have. School. In that building during voting. I don't want a good reasons for that.
Yeah.
Can the policy be changed on policy ends to say that it could be remote on voting?
I don't, I don't believe the law allows for the school to.
Okay.
Do that.
Okay.
Or non-weather or emergency related days.
Yeah, okay.
At this point in time.
I'll make a motion that we approved the twenty-two, three, twenty-four calendar as proposed.
My second.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. And thank you, Kim. All, all those in the favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed? None? So. Thanks for picking up on that and.
And can I just say that so the two or two property is nearly smack in the middle of Jeffrey and then.
Oh, it is.
So a building could literally be placed. Which means voting could happen from both towns.
Wouldn't that be something?
And the schools would not have to close. Oh my.
Uh, that brings up so many technical.
You're gonna have a gym with a line drawn.
What do we do? To have the kids that are learning geography to be able to stand in two towns at one.
We do the delivery. We have Jeffrey here. We have Ringe here. No, I.
We'll have to make it so the words. What is it? Oh, no, it just says Conan Middle School. I was gonna say if it says Jeffrey Ringe, we'll have to put it right on the line. Literally, no.
Um, can we go back to the board committee, like the, that assignments?
Yes.
I know that we have a lot of board committees. Um, and that we have limited time and I'm, um, I guess I am feeling that we should. Create a committee or a subcommittee for this new thing. I think that this. Is something that a school board members should be at the ground level on. Um, and hearing updates and and part of it. And I'm wondering if the committee is the way to do that. So I just want to put that out there. For the group to say if we're actually looking at doing something costing this much money. And looking for grant funding and looking for donations and looking for, yeah. Marketing and, and voter stuff. Is this something that we want to actually start a committee for?
So um, what you're saying is that this is so important that the entire board should participate is what you're, or.
I'm saying, saying, no, like any of our committees, a, our, a group should be part of this, taking notes on it. Having meetings with people, you know, that they, that it should be a dedicate, something dedicated, uh, that the board dedicated.
Okay. Nick, I'll get you just one second. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Uh, yeah, I think that if a committee is formed, which hopefully will. That the board members, when you request your assignment, could request to be part of that committee. I don't see a problem with that whatsoever.
You can only have three people on it, right?
But anybody could show, I mean, no.
You, you would have three board members and then. If I wanted to go, I could say I'm a community member.
Yes.
Cause that's how it works for all of that, you know?
Community.
Okay, uh, Nick.
Yeah, so just a few things about the committee assignments piece of this. Form this process for the committees that I'm referring to specifically, the um. Permanent standing committees. So like if you're a part of the JRSSA negotiating or some of these other groups, you would, that you would have that be in this. If you had a committee like that, um, the solar committee, um, those are all kind of independently formed based on who has the time, the interest, et cetera. This would just be for education, facilities, finance, policy, board goals, communication, wellness. Um, manifests. And then we usually have somebody elect to be on the construction trades PAC. If you take that one out of there and you just keep the recommended three-member, two-member piece, it's twenty-one positions. So theoretically, every person signs up for three. Yes, as people said, the whole idea of your committee can't be over three people. Because if you add that fourth person in, then you constitute a board meeting, which then at that point you're. Holding a standard board meeting anyway. What's the point of having a s- subcommittee for that purpose? Um, other board members have whatever rights to show up, whatever they are. But if you are, you're showing up as a member of the public. So you're not having the same rights that you would at a committee meeting, at a board meeting to just participate when you want. You're more of an observer. If there's a public comment or a, a comment section that's open up to other people, that's when you'd have the ability to talk, but you don't, you wouldn't be participating in votes. Conversations actively. Um, just a reminder about committees, um. Based on legal advice from the National School Board Association, all committees do need to be um. Functioning as the school board would, meaning that we need twenty-four hours notice for um. All meetings, that would be twenty-four hours and that's excluding holidays and Sundays. Um, you don't necessarily need to have a full formalized agenda, but you do need to have the date, time, location. Uh, so that people can attend. Uh, minutes do need to be generated. Insisting to the same standards that a school board meeting would, that would be people who showed up, um. Major discussions, motions, et cetera. Um, I'll include some of that information as a reminder in the email that I send out tomorrow with the survey. But I just wanted to remind everybody of those few points because I try to, you know, every year just to refresh people.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Nick, how many committees do we have that include? Not only. Um, not only board members, but also members of the administration or the community.
So.
Communication and wellness come to mind.
Yeah, so. Technically, most of them, there's kind of two different distinctions. There's a board committee. Which is most of them. And then there's one that's more considered to be like an administrative committee by like legal definition. Your ones that are primarily comprised of board members and you wouldn't have any, you might have people that show up and contribute, but they would be a part of the committee. That would be education, facilities, finance, policy, uh, school board goals. So those are, those would be your three-member um board committees. Obviously, you know, finance, you have like Ruben, you have Kerry that shows up. You know, John Le- Leclerc, you know, the eventual successor in the facilities director side shows up to facilities. Um, so you do have those experts that typically show up, but they're not technically like part of the committee. If you were to take a vote, they wouldn't be a part of that. They're just administrative advisors, I guess. When it comes to communication and wellness, those are. Kind of technically a different classification and that they kind of fall under more of an administrative purpose. And that's where you get those. Wider, broader groups. So in those, we have two board members that participate. Um, and then there's uh. I think nine people on communication and there's what, like five to seven on wellness right now?
It varies meeting to meeting.
We also have other, you know, we have the short-term committees that pop up for certain purposes. We also have like a joint loss committee, but that's independent of the school board, so. Um, those are kind of the two main groups. And then again, we need two people for uh manifests is the other piece.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Are there any committees that have an update since we last met on the twentieth?
Education, did that go to that one? Wasn't that one like a good one?
I'm feeling if I, I don't remember if I like was here in between there and here. Education committee last met. On the ninth.
Okay.
Now you can go.
Finance committee met and we uh spoke. Discuss primarily uh two things. One was the changes that were required to purchasing guidelines based on. Um, federal requirements. And the other thing was the. End of school year of surplus. When, where we stood with that. That's what we covered.
And the policy committee will see some new policies being. Can I say it again? The policy committee will see some new, Kerry will be handing some new or revised policies. Based on the federal. Audit recommendation.
And policy meeting was changed, I'm picking it up now. Is the twentieth, does that change? So April twentieth will be policy meeting. Yeah, because it wasn't during grade. We were changing rules. Okay, good. All right. And I'm not sure when goals for me. Um, could I talk about manifest for one, just a minute? It's a, it's a unique board responsibility. Um, so it's odd in the. Uh, in the survey that we send out. Um, so Chris, the manifest is something that's done weekly and it's a solo kind of thing. It's. Generally, we would have one Jeffrey, one Ringe board member signing the paperwork. We're going to sign at the office. I've done it for two years now and I guess I'm okay. Releasing that, but it's a unique responsibility, but so I thought I'd bring it up here. And I know you've been filling in John for Paul. But it, I thought maybe this one we could actually catch up in person to see who would like to say there's, I don't know, is that okay to?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a great way to become familiar with what we spend this thirty million dollars on and. As you go through and take a look at the invoices. You really do get us more of a sense.
Consider.
Yeah, I mean.
Anybody else want to consider like?
I'm at the school, you know, twice a day anyways, so um certainly wouldn't be an inconvenience for me. Good way to learn what's going on, as you said, too, John.
It is, it is very interesting to see.
Charlie's laughing, I guess. Probably a bit of a thankless task, but at the same time.
Plowing like that, seeing that plowing budget kind of goes, make you go, oh my god. That's good to see.
Thank you.
Yep.
So he's, you sent out the survey, so we'll go on to that.
Yeah, I'll send that out tomorrow.
All right.
And that manifests as an option on there. So you're happy to take that over, Chris. Just indicate that as one of your three, is one of your preferred options. I know that typically, so it's kind of broken up into what are you on right now? What do you kind of want to keep as a tenured board member? And then kind of what's your priorities for what you'd like to take over for the next year? And then John usually kind of, I communicate the information with him and Eric, whoever the chair is. And then it's kind of looking at tenureship. Who's been on certain committees for a certain length of time, how we can kind of maximize everybody together. So everybody's got equal work, equal responsibility and so on.
Would anybody be interested in taking Heather Shulman up on a, a visit to the Spalding School? Okay. So maybe I'll just send that an email as a reminder on that. And anybody responds will. Just say, you know, but your time constraints are, what time of the week or day would possibly, try and set something up. Okay. Then uh, are there any more board matters? Or future items that anyone would like to bring forward? Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So just a reminder for everybody who's here, um, you do have the ability to make a public comment at this point in the meeting. Uh, if you'd like to do so, you can use the hand raised feature at the bottom of whatever screen you're using that allow me to acknowledge you. Uh, first name, last name, town of residence, and just adhere to our policy, which essentially boils down to be kind. Um, no personal attacks, um. Try to keep your comments as brief as possible. Um, and then the uh Jeffrey or Ringe, I was gonna, like, those are the major points. So if you want to, John, we can give people a few minutes to potentially come in. You guys could go through board matters, future items.
Okay. So uh. Again, if there's any board matters or future items that anybody would like to bring forward.
I have a question. What is an RFP?
Request for proposals. Yeah, the. I hate acronyms.
I just didn't know what that one stood for. I know most of the others.
Well, you know, when you get to, to my age, you know, you'll know what they are, but then you forget them, so. All right.
No one's checked in.
Okay. All right, very good. Then we could entertain a. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Dave. All those in favor?
Aye.